If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So what happened to my statement that I just had? Here we go. So before we start public comment, there are a few things that we're going to add here. First, we want to thank you all for coming today. And please understand that in this room, the loudest and strongest, most impactful voice is not always the loudest and the most salacious. Please understand that with a humble heart that comes forward to share your story, to share your truth, and to share your feelings, we are here to listen. Everyone will have a chance to be heard, and we ask that you give each other the grace and help reduce any possible tensions or emotions by also being an advocate for listening to those around you. It's often hard to hold back reactions, I can promise you. When people come to the podium, it's very hard to hold back reactions. But we ask that you join us in taking time to listen to your neighbors as well. We hope that with what you share tonight, healing can happen not just for all of us in this room, but for the community.
Hello, everybody. My name is Dirk Beckerleig, and I'm the Township Attorney, and I want to address a few brief legal issues for tonight's meeting. First of all, Ms. Faqee's statement that was posted online does not constitute a crime under federal law, as it does not meet the legal requirements for a federal hate crime. It also does not constitute a crime under state law, as it does not meet the legal requirements for ethnic intimidation. Second, Ms. Faqee, in making her statement, was exercising her First Amendment right of free speech, and there are no legal grounds and no legal authority for the Township Board to remove her from the Township Board or the Zoning Board of Appeals. Finally, this meeting and the conduct of the persons attending this meeting and participating in this meeting are governed by the Open Meetings Act. Specifically, MCL 15.263 (6) provides that the township can have people removed from this meeting for a breach of the peace. So as a result, to prevent that from happening, because nobody wants that to happen, we would ask that everybody tonight share whatever they feel they need to share in a respectful and a responsible way. Thank you.
So our first agenda item, we have a speaker here today from the Interfaith Leadership Council of Metropolitan Detroit, where Reverend Stancy Adams, who is not only the Chair of the Interfaith Leadership Council of Metro Detroit, but also a five-year resident of Bloomfield Township. She's the founder and CEO of Safe Sacred Space Organization. It's a nonprofit. She's a hospital chaplain with Corwell Health. She's the interim senior pastor at the Missionary Baptist Church, and she was formerly the Secretary of the Council of Baptist Pastors of Detroit. And for those that aren't familiar with the Interfaith Leadership Council of Metropolitan Detroit, their community is enriched, or our community is enriched, by many religious values and practices. Our religious beliefs and expressions are the most dynamic influences in our culture. The Interfaith Leadership Council of Metropolitan Detroit brings people of many faiths together to work toward a harmonious community based on our highest and best values. They teach understanding, which leads to deep respectful relationships among individuals and different congregations and different faiths, as well as to those that do not have a religious affiliation. They advocate for resilience in the face of misunderstanding and bigotry. And so today, we have Reverend Adams.
Good evening. Oh, you could do better than that. Good evening. All right, we came out here because we really do want to come together on one accord. And I was asked to speak, and I told them it would only take me three minutes to say what I have to say. I believe in civil discourse. I believe that there is no room for hate of any kind, no hate of any kind. Hate is like a cancer, and unfortunately, in our society and in our country right now, it is like a malignant cancer, a cancer that has metastasized in every area, in government, in schools, in communities, and in some families. There's no room for that. And I told them that I would not talk about any ethnicity, any faith tradition, only people. And I know that we can come together and speak on one accord with each other in a civil matter. And I told them that I would use myself as the example. If I can stand here in 2024 as a black woman living in these United States with all the visceral comments that are made to me and to people in my community, and I don't wake up every morning hating people, hating white people for what they say to me, on my way here this evening, someone yelled obscenities out their window and gave me the finger. They don't know me. They don't know me, and you don't know each other. So then we accept people where they are. We love them because every tenet of faith or every faith tradition I know, one of the basic tenets is love, and the second one is peace. So if we operate from that vantage point, then there will be no room for hatred. And that is my statement to all of you. No matter what happens, you don't know me, you don't know each other, and it is whatever we do here cannot affect what happens 6,000 miles away. But we can love on each other unconditionally. Thank you.
Before we open public comment, are there any members of the board that would like to add anything?
Yeah, I would like to speak first, if that's okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Schostack. I'm your treasurer. And I wanted to speak before public comment. I know it's a little unorthodox, but I wanted to make sure that everybody here knew where I stood and what I think. And I wanted to address how my colleague's speech affected me. So this is the saddest day of my eight years on the Board of Trustees. It is sad because there's a level of division and hurt amongst the community and the board that I just haven't seen before. What's worse is that it is completely self-inflicted. There are no external forces that perpetrated something against this community. In fact, one of this community's own leaders perpetrated this on all of us. I've heard from residents, all of you, saying how disgusted they are. I've heard from employees how appalled they are. There has been a palpable tension around the halls of Township Hall the last week and a half. Now, there's no freedom of speech issue here, as no one is denying that Trustee Faqee has the right to say what she said. But the First Amendment does not give an elected official license to use hate speech to divide the community and impugn a large portion of its residents without repercussions. What's most concerning about this hate speech is that it is exactly the same language used by the Nazis in the 1930s. Hitler and the Nazis used terms like scum, vermin, and parasites to strip Jews of their humanity, paving the way for society to accept, support, and to accept and support their discrimination, isolation, and eventual extermination. I am the grandson of Holocaust survivors. I grew up hearing the stories of life in pre-war Europe, so I became alarmed when I hear language like that calling me the scum of the earth. Today, you hear the chants from the river to the sea, which call for the extermination of the State of Israel and its 10 million residents. The truly gruesome atrocities perpetrated by the terrorists on October 7th, 2023, were only possible because of the dehumanization and indoctrination inculcated into those young Palestinians. There may be those who don't think that what Trustee Faqee said was anti-Semitic. Well, according to the International Definition of Anti-Semitism, which is accepted by 43 countries, including the United States, statements that make mendacious, dehumanizing, demonizing, or stereotypical allegations about Jews are anti-Semitic. Furthermore, quote, "holding Jews collectively responsible for the actions of the State of Israel," end quote, are also anti-Semitic. Now, I recognize that there are Muslim members of the community who are hurting too. The loss of life in Gaza and Lebanon in the last year is tragic, and it's okay while you are hurting to acknowledge the humanity of the people on the other side. We need to be encouraging more of that. When we all accept our collective humanity, we can dialogue and work towards peace. As to where we go from here, this is a really rough time. The Board, as Dirk said, cannot remove her. But do we call for her resignation, knowing that she has five and a half weeks remaining in her term, is essential appropriate? I believe and hope that apologies and de-escalation can bring us back to the point where we can coexist. I hope that the public tonight uses their opportunity to speak, to offer up solutions on how this community can mend. I look forward to your comments. Thank you.
Michael, thank you very much. I'm Neil Barnett. I've been on the Board for 21 years. I've never experienced anything like this in my entire life in Bloomfield Township. I'm sickened by the events of the past few days and the venomous hatred spewed by Trustee Faqee. She has tried to tear this community apart and use her hatred as a platform for herself. But Bloomfield Township, the surrounding communities, and this Board will only become stronger and become closer because of her rants. We are better than that. Again, this Board is only as strong, is only stronger and more cohesive in response to this hatred. Yes, we are better than that. Bloomfield Township is a diverse community that has a fabric of numerous religious and ethnic groups. If one group is attacked, we are all attacked. I ask, who will be next? This entire Board has always accepted Trustee Faqee with open arms and given her the utmost respect. In return, she has selfishly put all of us, this entire Board, in harm's way, cost Bloomfield Township and surrounding police departments thousands upon thousands of dollars to keep us safe. We are better than that. One rogue trustee will not define this Board, or Bloomfield Township, or the surrounding communities. We will stand together strong.
Not after Stephanie. Stephanie goes last.
After public comment.
Okay. You want to?
Good evening. My name is Chris Kalinsky. I'm actually the newest trustee on the Board. I want to begin by expressing my gratitude to all of you who joined us tonight. Your willingness to share your thoughts, feelings, and emotions in this public forum is truly appreciated. It takes courage to come together and discuss issues that touch us deeply, and I commend your tolerance you have shown as we navigate this emotionally charged topic. I firmly believe that everyone has the right to free speech without fear of government retribution. However, with that freedom comes responsibility, particularly for those in public office. When you hold a position of leadership, you are held to a higher standard. It is your duty to represent the interests of your constituents above your personal beliefs and to prioritize the well-being of the community over your own interests. Your goal should be to foster unity, not division, and that is no small feat. We must remember that we are all human, affected by our emotions, families, and friends, and by circumstances beyond our control. Yet, as leaders in the community, we are expected to remain steady and not let our feelings cloud our judgment when it comes to representation. Recent actions by one of our trustees has created a rift within our community. Many members are feeling hurt, angry, frustrated, and saddened that a representative, someone that they placed their trust in, has used language in a public forum that is degrading. Whether or not it was intentional, the impact of those words have been significant. These comments have hindered our Board's ability to fulfill its duty to govern effectively. Our role is to represent, govern, and establish policies that benefit the community. As I conclude, I would like to share a powerful quote from Martin Luther King Jr. "Darkness cannot drive out darkness; only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate; only love can do that." Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Murray. I've been a trustee since 2020. Trustee Faqee and I came on the Board together in 2020. I was shocked and saddened to learn of the posted comments that Stephanie made. While she is entitled to share her personal opinion under the First Amendment, it was incredibly hurtful and unacceptable for someone who sits as a trustee. We must represent everyone in our community, residents and business owners alike, fairly and without bias. We took an oath of office to do so, and I take that responsibility very seriously. I hope for healing. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, folks. My name is Martin Brook, Township Clerk, and this statement was, that I'm reading now, you may not have seen, but Supervisor Walsh, Treasurer Schostack, and I worked together to prepare a press release concerning Stephanie Faqee's social media post. And this is that statement, which I'd like to read tonight, so that you all have an opportunity to have heard that. "We are deeply disturbed by trustee Stephanie Faqee's anti-Semitic social media post on Friday. Her views do not represent us, nor did she speak in an official capacity on behalf of Bloomfield Township. We are proud of our community's diversity, and we recognize that diversity as a source of strength. While we recognize her right to free speech, as Township trustees, it is our duty to represent and serve everyone equally and with respect. But her divisive and dehumanizing rhetoric undermined those values and wounded many residents. Ms. Faqee's term will end on November 20th. Between now and then, we call upon Ms. Faqee to help heal those wounds."
Then aside from that, I did not prepare anything in particular other than to say that when you sit in these seats, you are the voice of 45,000 people. And in some ways, you give up certain rights, and it's not a free speech, but in how you have to think of how did those words affect your community? And if they affect your community in a downward fashion, as it did earlier this week with the, what we felt were anti-Semitic comments, then I can't say that you're standing here with the 45,000. You have to remember that the voice of all is more important than the voice of one.
So first, before I start, I want to thank God for giving me this opportunity to address all of you today. I'm hoping that I can take this opportunity to be a moment of learning, of teaching, and of understanding. To those of you that are calling for my resignation, I see you and I hear you. And I ask, if even just for momentarily, for you to see me and to hear me. For the last week, you have seen some members of this Board give statements and comments to the press. In those statements and in those comments, they have put words in my mouth, and they have labeled me anti-Semitic. I caution us as a society against labeling people. And part of the reason why I caution against that...
Please. Please, everybody.
Part of the reason why I caution against labeling is because it will chill and suppress much-needed discourse. By labeling people, we shut down conversation immediately. And I urge against that because a metric, one metric of a functioning society is the ability to engage in discourse, whether we agree or don't agree. That is a metric of a functioning society. Now, whether this topic was the appropriate discourse for this forum was not my choice. It was members of this Board and local news organizations that perpetuated an opinion that plays no role in the business of Bloomfield Township. Because there is nothing that any of us sitting on this Board can say or do. As Reverend Adams touched on, nothing that we can do is going to change global policy or the realities that we see today in the Middle East. Today, you're hearing some of my fellow Board members calling me rogue and saying that I have besmirched the township. These same people that are sitting on this Board with me here today, they have applauded me for the last four years for my contributions to this township. And even though words have been put in my mouth, my accolades and my accomplishments and my contributions to Bloomfield Township and Oakland County speak for themselves. So people can try to paint me to be something that I'm not, but people in this community know who I am. Instead of... I would ask, if you could, as you listen to the other trustees, I would ask that you give me that same respect and allow me to give my statement to you all.
Please, please, I actually implore the same. Please.
So instead of commenting to the press, I wanted to address my constituency here today, face to face. I understand your anger. I understand your pain. Because just as you are human beings, I ask you to remember that so am I. I want to be very, very clear, because despite what you have heard about me, despite what you may have read in the press, I would never disparage any religion or spiritual belief, including Judaism. I would never do that. Now, there are people who have... I made a comment about Zionism, and what I want to be clear about is that a danger that we're seeing in society today is trying to redefine and broaden the definition of words. The problem with doing that, similar to labeling, is that it shuts down discourse and sometimes often needed dialogue. So by definition, I understand that there are people that conflate Zionism and Judaism. But by definition, by definition, you may not like the definition, but by definition, Judaism is a religion and Zionism is an ideology. I'm going to, I'm going to quote to you. I'm going to read to you from Merriam-Webster. I hope that we can all still agree that Merriam-Webster is a reliable source for defining words today. "By definition, Merriam-Webster tells us that Zionism is an international movement originally for the establishment of a Jewish national or religious community in Palestine and later for the support of modern Israel." That's the definition. And in the last year, in support of this ideology, we have watched as, for retribution for October 7th, we have watched the attacks on Gaza. We have seen 60% of infrastructure in Gaza obliterated, reduced to rubble, a countless, countless number of deaths. And in part, they're countless because there are still bodies under the rubble, a record number of disfigured children that will grow up without limbs. And after all of that death...
Please stop, please.
After all of that death and all of that destruction, Jewish people in Israel today are no safer than they were a year ago. The bloodshed must stop. And if there's a chance for unification to start in Bloomfield Township, then so be it. Last week, there was graffiti found at the Jewish Federation Building, disgusting and disturbing, unequivocally. Last week, 73-year-old Gary Lansky slashed the throat of a seven-year-old Muslim Yemeni girl, nearly deadly. He's been released on bond. None of that makes any of us safer. It has been said that you cannot separate peace from freedom, because no one can be at peace unless they have freedom. And I know from personal experience, from growing up and living in Bloomfield Township for the last 27 years, that it is possible for people of all walks of life, of all faiths, to live in peace and in freedom, because that's what we do here in Bloomfield Township. Nobody in Bloomfield Township is unsafe. This gathering of our community shows the diversity that we have, and our diversity is an asset. And I would say that this Board and its diversity is a testament to the value of having different viewpoints and different perspectives. I will never stand to divide. I have dedicated my time as trustee and every organization that I have been a part of professionally for the last 10 years by solving problems and serving others, and I don't intend to stop that now. So my hope is to use this moment to try and help others understand that members of your community, Arab-Americans, both Muslim and Christian, are in pain, and a lot of them are suffering in silence. Why are they suffering? Because for one year, we have woken up to look to the news to see what place did we grow up going that has now been reduced to rubble? What family members do we have to check up on to see if they have been forced to leave their home, or worse, if they've died? These are not faraway people to us. These are our mothers, our fathers, our siblings, our nieces, and our nephews. And sadly, many of those people in your community are afraid to speak out. They're afraid to talk about their pain, because they're afraid of being labeled, as you have all labeled me. If just one person can walk away from this experience with a different understanding or more empathy, then that will be worth it for me to have had my phone number and my home address published online, receiving threatening messages. All of that will be worth it to me if we can walk away with a better understanding. And I want us to live the lessons that history has already taught us. It's not lost on me today that October 14th is Indigenous Peoples' Day. It has taken this country nearly 200 years to finally accept and acknowledge that our republic was built at the expense of this land's first people. History has already taught us these lessons. We don't have to wait to live those lessons that we have already learned. We can do it today. We can stand for humanity today. And regardless of the consequences, I will never let history or the record reflect that I caused division or that I wanted divisiveness. Safety comes when we all have freedom and when we all have peace. And I want to leave you with a quote from Ellie Vizel, Holocaust survivor. And I want to leave you with a quote from Ellie Vizel, Holocaust survivor. "I swore never to be silent whenever and wherever human beings are enduring suffering and humiliation. We must always take sides."
Ma'am, the public comment will start after Ms. Faqee, trustee Faqee is complete.
I will always choose the side of humanity before any religion, before any race, before any ethnicity. I embrace humanity first. My hope is that we can continue to serve as we have for the last four years successfully and finally get back to the business of Bloomfield Township. Thank you.
So at this point, we're going to start public comment, and I'm going to turn over to Clerk Brook.
Okay, good evening. Each member of the public is invited to make a comment to the board. My role is to provide some structure to this process. In this room, we currently have a full capacity according to the Fire Marshal's determination of safe allowance of people. You can see we're very full. You may also hear there are people outside waiting also to speak. We hope to give them an opportunity as well. As I said, there's another 40 people outside, and I'll get to that. So here are some instructions and some guidelines I would like you to follow, please, with regard to public comment. First, many people did submit written comments. This is just a sample here. As of 6:55, all of those were distributed to board members. It is the practice of this board that we do not read aloud written public comments sent to the board. During the meeting, our computers, by the way, are not connected to the internet, so during the meeting, if additional comments are sent in or afterwards, those too will be distributed to board members. Since this room is at full capacity, in order for someone outside to come and make a public comment, someone in here will have to leave. No one is being asked to leave, and no one's required to leave. But that is the dilemma we're in, right? If someone does end up leaving, another person will be let in, and they may want to make a public comment. If no one does leave, then no one else will be coming in, because the Fire Marshal's standards have been set for this room. As far as the details, public comment is limited to three minutes per person. You don't have to take three minutes, but I will give you 20-second warning as that time comes up. The timer is also behind us and next to us, so you can see it yourself. When we get to three minutes, please be completed in your statement. You may find that many people who will speak before you will make many of the similar comments you have in mind. You're not required to come up and say them again. You could come up and simply say whatever you like, or perhaps you might say, "Well, I agree exactly with what was said previously." But you are entitled to the full three minutes, and you will get that if you'd like to use the full three minutes. We ask you to provide your name and address. We only include names in the minutes of this meeting, and we do not summarize the contents of anyone's statements. When you hit the three minutes, by the way, I'll ask you to stop, and if you are not able to stop, please wrap up very, very promptly, like within moments after that. If not, continuing to speak is disruptive and unfair to all the rest of the people here in the room who also want to speak tonight. Please keep your audience responses to a minimum. Again, a lot of people are going to want to express their opinions tonight. We look forward to everyone who wants to doing that. And if we're engaged in a lot of responses to comments, that can delay the time for everybody else that is here. Each of you should have a numbered card. That card was to help track the attendance in this room, to keep it within Fire Marshal orders, and also that number is the number we'll use to call out public comment. You do not have to come up and speak, but I will call those numbers, every number that's been distributed, and in groups of five, you know, 25 through 30, for instance, and come up here. If they want to speak, speak. If you choose not to speak when your number is called, your number will not be called again. That is your one opportunity. Lastly, as we start, I request that everyone is collegial and respectful, as I know you will be, and thank you in advance. So with that, with that, the first 24 numbers were for members of the board and others we had in advance, so the first numbers are 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30. So please come up, those five. Of those five, anyone who wants to speak, you're welcome to when you start. Our assistant here will count down the three minutes.
Members of the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees, good evening. My name is David Kersman, and I have the privilege of speaking on behalf of the Jewish Federation of Detroit. For over three decades, the Jewish Federation has been headquartered on Telegraph Road in Bloomfield Township, where we serve as the central hub of Jewish life in metro Detroit. We are deeply grateful for our longstanding partnership with Bloomfield Township, its Board of Trustees, and its dedicated police department. As we publicly stated last week, the Jewish Federation of Detroit strongly condemns the recent anti-Semitic remarks made by Bloomfield Township trustee Stephanie Faqee on social media. Her statement, "Israeli Zionists are the scum of the earth and the only people on par are American Zionists," is a blatant and harmful attack on our Jewish community. These words are not merely offensive. They are deeply hurtful and contribute to a climate of hatred and intolerance that has no place in our society. Zionism is the belief in a Jewish homeland. It's a central tenet of Jewish identity and history. The vast majority of Jews are Zionists. Israel is our ancestral homeland. Just last weekend, Jews observed Yom Kippur, the holiest day on our calendar. Standing in synagogue at the end of a 25-hour fast and a day of prayer, we declared "Next year in Jerusalem." Indeed, our liturgy is full of references to the land of Israel and Jerusalem. To label us as scum of the earth is dehumanizing and offensive. It perpetuates harmful stereotypes and fuels prejudice against our community. This rhetoric only serves to embolden those who seek to harm us. It creates a dangerous environment where our safety and dignity are threatened. We have witnessed a disturbing rise in anti-Semitic incidents in recent years, including acts of harassment, vandalism, and even violence. Just a week ago, employees of the Jewish Federation were greeted by hateful graffiti on our building. It was the third time this year that our building was targeted. We call on all sensible people to stand with the Jewish community against this hate. Each of you, our elected officials, understands the responsibility you take on in your role. You have been elected to serve all the people of this township. You have the duty to denounce hate speech and promote a culture of respect and understanding. We thank the Board of Trustees members who have done so publicly in recent days and tonight. The Jewish Federation of Detroit is committed to standing up for the rights and dignity of the Jewish people. We will not tolerate anti-Semitism or any form of discrimination.
20 seconds.
We look forward to our continuing work with Bloomfield Township to create a safe and inclusive community for all residents.
Hi, Stephanie.
Hi.
My name is Mark. My wife is Rachel. We have two boys who are college students. We have a dog who loves to chase squirrels, but amazingly doesn't bark. And we moved here after living in Houston, before that in Los Angeles, 11 years ago, where I became the senior rabbi of Temple Beth El, just down the street at 14 Mile. Week, week and a half ago, you decided to call me scum, me personally. Unfortunately, I believe that when you call a person scum, it can only be for two reasons. It's either because of hatred or because of ignorance. This evening, you said that you are not a hateful person. You said that you are not an anti-Semitic person. I don't know you. You don't know me. We've never met. So I would like to believe that it's out of ignorance. And honestly, based on what you said tonight, I think it was out of ignorance. I'll just point out two things. The first one is that you read a dictionary definition of Zionism. You can't get a definition of Zionism from Merriam-Webster. It's a great dictionary. It's good for verbs and vowels. It doesn't do Zionism. And part of what it doesn't get is that what you read as a definition is "modern political Zionism," which is not the same as historic Zionism. Zion is a word that comes from the Bible, long before Merriam-Webster lived. Zion is a word that represents the spot where God touched the earth and where human beings first lived. Zion is a place that existed in our dreams and in our memories. It's a place where my ancestors walked. It's a place where I visit today. I'm a Zionist because I love hiking in the north of Israel. I'm a Zionist because I've lived in Israel twice. I'm a Zionist because I enjoy walking along these ancient cobblestone streets and pathways where people have done the same thing for hundreds and even thousands of years. My son is named Ben Zion, son of Zion. All of that predates the modern idea of Zionism. And when you label me personally as scum, when you say that I am scum, what it means is that if you aren't anti-Semitic, you have committed an anti-Semitic act. And I hope you can understand the difference. It's not, it's not the same thing to be something as to say something. What you did was anti-Semitic. There isn't another way to say it. Whether you are or not depends on how you respond to this moment. And my hope, honestly, my deep hope, is that you will understand the anger in this room and the anger that's coming from a lot of different quarters, which isn't because people hate you, it's because what you said was hateful. And my hope is that one day, we can find a way to work together to make that better. But yes, it has to start with you, and it has to start with apologizing for an act that came from a bad place.
Svee Muller. I am the rabbi of the Birmingham Bloomfield Shul here in Bloomfield Township at 36300 Woodward Avenue. Anti-Semitism has masked itself as anti-Zionism throughout the entire modern era. It is not I who is conflating Zionists with Jews, as Stephanie seemed to suggest. It is those who hate Jews and wish to harm us who have conflated Zionists with Jews throughout history and continue to do so today. A case in point, The Protocols of the Elders of Zion, a completely false and libelous book was published over 120 years ago, about a half a century before the modern state of Israel even existed. It is considered the most influential work of anti-Semitism ever written. The book was used to spread Jew hatred across six continents, drive countless pogrom massacres, and fuel the Holocaust. Goebbels, the Nazi chief propagandist, called it "the Zionist Protocols" and used it to spread Jew hatred and the Nazi agenda. Within the anti-Semitic population, which is the population we should be concerned about tonight, the words posted by you, Stephanie, convey the message that in Bloomfield Township, it is open season for Jew hatred. While the dehumanizing words "scum of the earth" are not a cult for violence in themselves, coming from a township trustee, they uniquely contribute to an environment in which those who wish to harm my community feel emboldened. With those people, it doesn't matter whether they know my views on Zionism. This is all they need to see to call me a Zionist baby killer, shout that I should go back to Israel, and yell "death" to Jews as I walk the streets of Bloomfield Township. I ask Stephanie to retract and apologize for the wording of her post. Unfortunately, tonight, all I heard from you was a lot of gaslighting, aggressor playing the victim. I'm disappointed, but I ask again that you reflect on your words and consider them and apologize. In the meantime, I must request the following of each of the other trustees. Do not let Stephanie's words remain uncensured. To paraphrase Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "We will have to repent for the appalling silence of the good people." Dear trustees, please speak up for those whose humanity and safety are marginalized by Stephanie's words. For me, this is not about Stephanie's free speech.
20 seconds.
I support her right to express herself freely. What this is about is your free speech tonight, you standing up for those whose safety has been marginalized and who have been dehumanized. In advance, I express my gratitude to all the trustees who will make it very clear tonight that in Bloomfield Township, that Bloomfield Township is not, it's not open season for hating Jews and for hating all Americans who believe that Israel has a right to exist.
My name is David Victor, and I don't know what I did in a past life to have to follow these speakers. I'd like to just start off by saying, oh, I'm at 5588 Land Lake Road. Start off by saying, we're here, trustee Faqee, not because of your colleagues, not because of the media, not because of the failure to understand the definition of Zionism, but because of your post. That's why we're here. I'm a lifelong resident of Bloomfield Township. I'm Jewish. I'm a Zionist, and thus I've been labeled by you, scum of the earth. And I guess it's worth noting, since you noted it, as a Jew, I am one of the indigenous people of the land of Israel. So I believe in the right of the Jewish peoples, or the Jewish people's right of national self-determination, which means I believe in the right of the Jewish state of Israel to exist, which means I'm a Zionist. It also means I am part of the, almost the entirety of the Jewish people in this country, and the vast majority of non-Jewish Americans join me in Zionism as well. So when you label me, let me back up. The Secretary of State, the Department of State, sorry, on their website, when they define antisemitism, they list as an example of it. You can see it on the website. The denial of the Jewish people's right to national self-determination, and one example they list of that is calling Israel a racist state. So when you issue a post that calls American Zionists scum of the earth, you are guilty of espousing antisemitism, irrespective of whether you are or not a distinction the rabbi drew. And you're also guilty of egregiously insulting the overwhelming majority of your constituents. So I think the choice to the Board of Trustees is pretty clear and simple. Ms. Faqee's post has sullied the reputation of this Board of Trustees. It just has. So the only way to redeem it is to unanimously censure her for what she did. And if you do so, you will redeem the board, I believe, of her statement. If you do not, though, I'm afraid this will be an indelible stain.
Ron Lippett, Commerce Township, American Zionist here. I can't imagine what you were thinking. What were you thinking? It's one thing to take issue with Israeli policy. It's something I suspect many in the room could do. But that's not what you did. You called a giant chunk of your constituency scum. You called me scum. You called my children scum. What's more is, it wasn't a mistake, not a slip of the tongue, a drunken missive, as so often anti-Semitic remarks tend to be. You doubled down on it. I don't need to defend myself, but I will defend my kids. They're pretty cool kids. Strip away your hate, your inhumanity, and you might actually see something from them that you value, including, I might add, their desire, more than anything, to solve the problems of the Middle East. What you did, it's not okay. It's not just outright antisemitism, or the xenophobia, or the venom. More than anything, it's the license you gave. As an elected official, you suggested this is okay, even appropriate. You gave license to hate against a group who understands all too well what that means and what's more, what it can mean. And so I invite you to apologize unconditionally, here, now. But if you don't, be assured, our community of Jews, non-Jews, those who have had enough of hate, those who are keenly aware of the pernicious effects of antisemitism, we can take it from here. You should see plainly in this auditorium what the world sees. Jews will not be silent to hate. We see you for... We see you for who you are, and what's more, we see you for what you are. And here we are, strong, together, resolved. And so I ask again, plainly, simply, what were you thinking?
You must be number 30, right? You must be number 30, right?
Yes, 30, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Svetlana Toder, and I want to start by acknowledging Ms. Faqih's difficult feelings and hurt because of what her family is going through in Lebanon and her loved ones. So I want to acknowledge that. I acknowledge your pain, and I hope that they stay safe and healthy, and hopefully this is all will be over soon. I do realize that people, and I know I've done it myself, sometimes say things when they're in pain that they really don't think through, or they don't realize that there is something wrong with their words. I've done it. I paid consequences for the words I chose in the past, and I use those experiences as learning opportunities. So my only hope for tonight is that you would listen to all of us and maybe realize that your words were very hurtful and they were antisemitic. And I want to read something real quick, because unfortunately, you're not the only person that decides to define what words that relate to our beliefs and our religion mean. It became normalized for other people who are not Jewish to define Zionism and Judaism. If you're not Jewish, you do not get to define our words like Zionism, and you do not get to decide what is or isn't antisemitic. You wouldn't do that to any other minority, and you aren't going to appropriate our culture or religion by doing it now. And before anyone, or you, say it or think it, you also don't get to tokenize your Jewish friends who agree with you when the majority of Jews, 90%, and more, are Zionists and agree that anti-Zionism is antisemitism, and calling Zionist names is antisemitism. So please stay tonight with an open mind and hear us out. And I really do hope that by the end of the night, or maybe after you think about it for some time, you realize that your words are hurtful and should not have been said. Thank you.
So next up are number 31 through 35. If you're interested in speaking, please come up to the podium here now.
Hello, my name is Aaron Porus. I live off of Maple and Middlebelt. And I think that I could probably positively speak for everybody when I say that we wish for the safety and the health of all innocent civilians in Gaza, the West Bank, Israel, Jordan, and everywhere else. Now, onto my statement. Jordanians who support Jordan's right to exist are the scum of the earth, and the only people on par are Americans who support Jordan's right to exist. Israeli Zionists are the scum of the earth, and the only people on par are American Zionists. If only one of these statements upsets you, you are part of the problem, because they are exactly the same thing, and they are both disgusting sentiments. Now, I'm a free speech absolutist. I do actually support Ms. Faqih's right to speak this way, and I don't wish her doxxed or harmed, but there absolutely must be a consequence for such rhetoric among public officials. It is an abuse of the weight of her position, an insult to her many Jewish constituents, and an outright challenge to Israelis, Jews, Arabs, Muslims, Palestinians, and others who are actually working towards unity, peace, and coexistence. And it is an implicit call to support Israel's and the United States' enemies, which in this case are Hamas, Hezbollah, the Houthis, and the IRGC, all of whom are prescribed terrorist groups in this and many other countries for good reason. Therefore, Ms. Faqih must be removed from her position immediately. And "she'll be gone soon enough, so let her be" is not a good enough objection. It shows an indifference, it shows an indifference to a plague of hatred that is becoming ever more pervasive in our lives, consequently because of such indifference. And if you don't believe me, one only has to look at the extreme spike in antisemitic hate crimes across the country and our community, which dwarfs nearly all other race, religion, or ethnicity-based crimes combined, despite Jews only making 1.9% of the United States' population. Now, when the anti-Israel crowd calls out against Zionists while standing in front of University Hillel Houses, synagogues, the Jewish Federation, and even the Holocaust Memorial Museum on Orchard Lake just a few miles away, it becomes painfully obvious to whom they are referring and for what they stand. So back to the statement. Israeli Zionists are the scum of the earth, and the only people on par are American Zionists. Setting aside that Zionist is, in this pejorative context, is almost always a dog whistle for Jews. If one follows the logic of Faqih's statements, then they should be rooting for Hezbollah, which has terrorized and murdered tens of thousands in Lebanon and Syria, including American service members. That we should support Hamas, which gleefully slaughtered innocent men, women, and children on camera.
Twenty seconds.
Uses human shields, takes hundreds of hostages, including Americans, and throws gays and political opponents off of roofs. That we should support the Houthis, which have been terrorizing the seas in their neighboring Arab states for years, and that we should support the Ayatollahs in Iran, who fund terrorism globally, sanction the murder of young women for wearing their head coverings wrong, and hangs people from cranes in macabre public executions while chanting "Death to America" and "Death to Israel."
Please wrap it up.
I don't know about you, but this does not seem like someone who should be empowered to represent this community or anyone else in America. I'm going to skip now to a bunch, especially when we consider that this only came out because Ms. Faqih's message was leaked. Ms. Faqih asks us to see her.
Please wrap up.
I think what she says when she thinks she's behind closed doors is the best glimpse into her mind.
Sir, your time is up.
Very last, very end. No patient put the words in your mouth, and you put your words today, which paint Israelis and Jews as untouched by the conflict as opposed to Muslims and Christians, only serve to show that you have no real remorse.
Thank you, please move on.
I wonder what you've said before.
Before I go, Oscar, please, just a quick second. I want to remind you, please, that three minutes is, is, is a long time for everyone's going to speak tonight. And if you go beyond three minutes, it is more difficult for everybody else who are going to wait and have numbers in the hundreds and so forth. So thank you for speaking, but please, everybody, keep it to three minutes or less. Thank you.
I'm Oscar Garner. I reside at 3415 Barlin Lane. I'm running for Bloomfield Township trustee. I'm very disappointed by the divisive, hurtful statement of trustee Faqih. You don't have to be Jewish to be appalled by the conduct by an elected official in Bloomfield Township government. While technically it may be protected speech under First Amendment, we all know it's thinly veiled antisemitism, antisemitic, I'm sorry. As a candidate to replace Faqih on the board, I believe I'm uniquely positioned to demand that the board be outspoken about any form of discrimination or harassment in our community and be the voice of inclusiveness. Trustee Faqih, as an elected official, your statement does not foster togetherness, inclusiveness, and operating in what's best for the residents. While I respect your willingness to speak tonight, you have failed to offer an apology to the people you hurt. A sincere apology is much more than just saying "I'm sorry." You acknowledge a mistake and the remorse that comes with it. Thank you.
My name is Leo Savoy. I'm the former supervisor here at Bloomfield Township. I wrote a speech that was going to be conciliatory in nature, and I'm sitting back there thinking I should change it because of the defiance that I heard with the explanation as to how that happened. But I'm not going to let you change what I think, so I'm going to go forward with what I planned. I start every day by saying, "I greet this day with love in my heart, because that is the greatest secret of success in all ventures. Muscle can split a shield and even destroy life, but only that unseen power of love will stand you above everybody else." I was in such disbelief when I read those comments, and I've got to shorten it up so I can get this done. In this past, this Bloomfield Township board that I've been involved with for 16 years, 10 years as supervisor, we have worked collectively together with all the different groups within the community. It doesn't matter whether it was neighborhood associations, business entities, religious groups, it didn't matter whether it was Temple Beth El, the Muslim Unity Center, the Plymouth Christian Brethren, the Christian Leadership Academy, Kirk in the Hills, St. Regis. We treated everybody as if we wanted to be treated. Likewise with the schools, Country Day, Brother Rice, Marion, and St. Regis, we treated them with the respect and the rights that we would expect. We made sure that every single group felt welcome within this community. I might be an American Zionist, because I believe that people have the right to free existence. I believe that the people have the right to have peaceful existence. What I know is that using the verbiage and the terminology that was used doesn't foster that. It doesn't allow that. Never once in my 16 years of my tenure on the Bloomfield Township Board have I seen an elected official use that kind of terminology, make those kinds of comments. These are your neighbors here. These are your constituents here. These are people within the community that are our friends. All you've done is driven a wedge between them. This has been very difficult for me to compose. Hopefully, we have what I call a learning moment. Stephanie, I would hope you would start the healing process. I would look to you to recant your statement.
Twenty seconds.
I would look to you to give an apology to the community as a whole, and after that, I believe we can all go forward. Every night, I have a cross sitting by my bed, and I grab it, I hold it, and I thank God for what He's given me today, and I hope He is as gracious to me tomorrow. Thank you.
I made extra copies of my remarks for the trustees. Honorable trustees, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sheldon Freyloch, and we have been township residents and voters since 1987. Both of our children were graduated from the local public high school. They were both raised with values that would never allow them to use trustee Faqih's reprehensible vitriol toward any religion or ethnicity. Let me explain why the township board should censure Stephanie Faqih and ask her to resign for the language in her social media posts. I am personally deeply offended by the antisemitic statements. We are seeing extraordinary levels of violent antisemitism in our country and worldwide against Jews and Israel, the world's sole Jewish country. The modern form of antisemitic bigotry is the thinly veiled anti-Zionism. Judaism is inextricably connected to cultural heritage, traditions, history, and the land. The connection between Jews and the land of Israel permeates the Jewish calendar, Jewish lifecycle events, Jewish law, Jewish prayer, and Jewish history. Three times a day, traditional Jews pray for the rebuilding of Zion, the Jewish homeland. Jews have been the continuously indigenous people of Israel for over 3,000 years. Anti-Zionism is antisemitic because it attacks and undermines a core belief. It denies the ties between Judaism and the land of Israel, and is a denial of the Jewish right to have a home. Vilifying, marginalizing, demonizing, boycotting, and excluding Jews because they express support for Jewish self-determination in the Jews' ancestral homeland is antisemitic harassment and dehumanization of Jews. As a governmental entity, the township must comply with federal law, including the U.S. Civil Rights Act, its Title VI, which prohibits discrimination based on national, racial, ancestral, or ethnic origin, including Jews, in programs and activities receiving financial assistance. Ms. Faqih's promotion of discrimination flies in the face of this law. Ms. Faqih, we are not trembling Jews. No one has the right to demand that Jews shed their sense of peoplehood and repudiate our historic year-long yearning for a connection to Israel. You and the dictionary do not define Judaism or Zionism. I urge the township board to take immediate action to censure trustee Faqih and request her resignation. It is essential for our community to stand against hatred and bigotry in all forms. Thank you.
So number 35, I think, is next?
Four.
Yeah. Oh, you're 35? Okay. So 36 through 40, if you're...
I'm 34.
Oh, you're 34. You must be 35. So yeah, 35. Anyone who wants to speak up to number 40, please come on up.
36.
Okay.
I was hoping to be one of those people to not speak, because plenty's been said, but I had to respond to a few of the comments that Ms. Faqih made. So first of all, she suggested that she did not insult any of the...
Oh, excuse me. Did you state your name?
Michael Horowitz, 539 Bates.
Thank you.
She said she did not insult Jews, or she only insulted American Zionists. If it's not been made clear already, I would like everybody in this room who identifies as an American Zionist to please raise their hand so you can see who you did insult in Bloomfield Township. So even if you didn't insult Jews, you insulted all your constituents here. Number two, I didn't want to get into the discussion of the Middle East. It's too complicated. Much has been said, but you made a few comments that needed to be repudiated. You talked about how we all got along in Bloomfield Township, but I haven't heard anybody call any, excuse me, I haven't heard any Arab Palestinians call for all Jews to vacate all the land between Square Lake Road and 14 Mile. Therefore, to suggest that we have similarities in what we're doing here versus what's going on in the Middle East, and that gives you a right to somehow express your opinion about those of us in Bloomfield Township, was wrong. Again, not to get into what's going on there, but I heard you express your pain and concern for all the, rightfully, for all the civilians and destructions in Gaza, but never once did I hear you say, you know, "If only Hamas had not attacked, if only Hamas would give back the..." Only Hamas would give back the hostages. If only Hamas would surrender, which most losing sides do in a war, then maybe, just maybe, there would be a lot more civilians left, there'd be a lot more billions. As one of the members of the audience said, "I heard no remorse for the hostages, very innocent people. My wife and I just came back from the Gaza envelope, seeing the destruction of people who were innocent civilians, and again, I heard no remorse for their..." And lastly, if it isn't already clear, if any of these trustees had made some blanket statement about, excuse me, all African-Americans being scum, all Muslims being scum, all Arabs being scum, all, any ethnic group being scum, they would be torpedoed out of the city right now, as we should.
Hi. My name is Colby Erz. I'm the director for ZOY Michigan. You thanked God when you started your speech, and I want to thank God also for all of you who came together to fight, to fight this cause, to fight against hate. And I think people came here two hours before the meeting started, is because we do not feel safe. The Jewish community do not feel safe, and especially since October 7th. We see that at University of Michigan. I have friends who are afraid to show that they're Jewish. My family has been harassed while walking down the street, and my ancestors, since the 2,000 years ago, some of them stayed in Israel after the first exile, some of them left to Iraq, and they stayed in Iraq for 2,000 years, including in Baghdad. My grandparents are from Baghdad, and their family was massacred during the Farhood pogrom in 1941. And this pogrom happened partially because the Iraqi government pushed the Nazi propaganda, the protocol design, and the Mein Kampf of Hitler. And when they executed their pogrom, they used slurs as Zionist infidels and Zionist parasites towards the people before this state of Israel was established. During this pogrom, women were raped, men were beheaded, kids were murdered, and it's very similar to what happened on October 7th. So to tie Israel... During this program, women were raped, men were beheaded, kids were murdered, and it's very similar to what happened on October 7th. So to tie Israel and to say that Zionism has nothing to do with anti-Semitism is historically I think that if we do stay silent, then things are only going to get worse. You spoke about religion. Jews, for 2,000 years, have been praying to get back to the State of Israel. When Hamas attacked on October 7th, they didn't attack only Zionists. When you look at the Hamas Charter, they look at Jews. They talk about Jews. They don't only talk about Zionists. So I think that it's very important that we're here today, and I think that moving forward, we should mobilize our community again and not stay silent. Raise your voice now, or things are only going to get...
Seconds.
Or things are all going to get worse. Thank you.
Number 38?
I'm 40.
38? Okay, 40?
I'm 49.
39.
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Barry Goodman. I moved to Sodan Lake Drive about 16, 17 months ago. Was happy until a few days ago to be a new resident of Bloomfield Township where I thought it was a community, and that we all had our differences, but we could all get along. Houses that had the Harris signs, Harris that had the Trump signs, didn't care because they were my neighbors, and they could make their decisions as they are. But none of them have ever come across with a proud name, and they know me. And to think that strangers could call me scum? And there's not one Jew in here that's not a Zionist, because as far as I'm concerned, and I think everybody else here, the simple explanation is, we believe in Israel's right to exist. That's the definition. Do you believe in Israel's right to exist?
Excuse me.
You can answer it.
It's not a Q&amp;A process. Thank you.
We know the answer. So you're not a Zionist. That's okay. You wouldn't want to call yourself a name. Hold on. Can I get there? My building, I'm Goodman Acker. Southfield, in Southfield on 10 Mile Road, about three months ago, my building was vandalized, just as the Federation building was. The community came together and helped us, you know, repair the building, even though it was still $50,000 worth of damage, and I'm sure the Federation, for the third time, has those expenses too. You mentioned the incident with the Yemen girl, and I thank God she lived. The police said he didn't know what she was. He had mental anguish issues, mental illness issues, and they have not said it was a hate crime. They haven't said that he knew she was Muslim or anything. It was just a stupid, inane crime, and he's going to pay for it. Your statements, to me, you should pay for it. You should pay for it by the censors, and you should pay for it by resigning. I don't think that you're... Let's talk about... I don't have a lot of time yet. On October 7th...
Please state, so that we can hear you, because somewhere outside...
Women were raped. Babies were burned and their heads cut off. Hamas did that. Has Israel done any of that in Gaza?
Twenty seconds.
Has Israel done any of that in Lebanon? No. They try to miss, you know, innocent people who are being surrounded by Hamas soldiers because they think that's going to get Israel a lot more attention, that they might be killing innocent people. The person who's not innocent is human, and you really should resign tonight.
Hi, welcome. Just before you start, are you number 40? Great, thank you.
Number 40.
So, you know, 41 through 45, please come on up if you want to speak. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Good evening, and thank you all to the members of the Board of Trustees. I thank you, and I want to thank the Bloomfield Township Police Department. A round of applause for them, because the township, thank you all, one and all. We can see some of you, some we can't. Thank you. Thank you. We all appreciate your presence.
And for the record, your name is?
Oh, sorry. My name is Margie Winkelman Epstein.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of the township for 50 years. I think I could be your grandmother. I'm old enough to be your grandmother. You grew up in Birmingham. I grew up in Detroit. You went to Cranbrook. I went to public school throughout Detroit. My parents, grandparents, all lived here. You're a member of the State Bar of Michigan. I'm a member of the State Bar of Michigan. I've been a member of the State Bar of Michigan for 50 years this year. I'm very proud of that and good standing. So humbly, I want to disagree with our able attorney here. I'm not clear at all that what has been said is protected speech. I'm giving my legal opinion here, and I think there are incredibly strong arguments to the effect that it is not protected speech. So that's one thing I want to say. I venture to say that many members of the Board of Trustees are shocked and surprised by what you said online. I believe that. I believe that they treated you with respect and that you did the same to the others. But while you were speaking, I looked up the word traitor in the Webster Dictionary. And the word traitor means betrayer. And I'm sorry to tell you, but that's just what you've done here. You've betrayed the very people who elected you. We all put our trust in you. You have a public mission here for a greater good that you haven't been serving. So what do we do? What do we do here? One thing we could do is say that you have violated the code of conduct, the ethics of the American Bar Association, which you have. This is not protected conduct by a professional, and I think that a grievance filed against you with the State Bar of Michigan would be appropriate.
Good evening. My name is Brian Keeps. I'm a proud longstanding resident voter, past Bloomfield-appointed official, board member, and treasurer. I provide my comments this evening with these two overriding thoughts. To quote the Dalai Lama, "Be kind whenever possible, it's always possible." And to quote Bloomfield Rabbi Svi Mueller, "Always give someone the benefit of the doubt." Leadership in Bloomfield has always been exemplary responsible and civil. Everyone that I serve with understood that they've always represented all of the good and decent residents of Bloomfield. So trustee Faqee, when you speak, you speak as an elected representative of the Bloomfield residents. Your public post that Israeli Zionists, I quote, "Israeli Zionists are scum of the earth only on par with American Zionists," end quote, is hateful, hurtful, and is no place coming from anyone, let alone an elected Bloomfield official. Scum, it's something that you want to get rid of. Being kind and providing you the benefit of the doubt, maybe you don't understand the kind of hateful, dehumanizing rhetoric, that that kind of hateful, dehumanizing rhetoric in Germany resulted in the Holocaust. To better educate yourself on the effects of hate speech, I suggest that you visit the Holocaust Memorial Center in Farmington Hills, and I'm donating $180 to the Holocaust Center to educate you and the others on the ultimate effect of hate. Perhaps you don't realize or understand that your words are and further spread anti-Semitism, hating Jews not just because we are... Hating Jews just because we are Jews. Hate is hate and dangerous to all societies. Perhaps you didn't intend your rhetoric to be anti-Semitic, but it is. It's hateful, hurtful, and painful, not just to Jews, but to all people, because sooner or later, hate can and will be used against all people. I suggest you better educate yourself about the definition and effects on Jews and all such people. As such, I will donate $180 to Anti-Defamation League to help educate you and others on the assiduous effects of hatred and to help ensure that we stop anti-Semitism, bigotry, and disrupt extremism. And lastly, we serve in a diverse country and community. That is our greatest strength. With your hateful words as an illustration of that need, and with the goal of strengthening Bloomfield, I will donate $180 to the Interfaith Leadership Council of Metropolitan Detroit, which advocates religious freedom, civil discourse, humane and compassionate acceptance of refugees, and works against bigotry and ill will. Trustee Faqee, after serving in Bloomfield for 30 years, I know that you do not resent... You do not represent the sentiments of our residents, and I ask that you apologize and resign your elected position. To the Board of Trustees, I respectfully request that you censure this trustee for bringing havoc, anger, and shame to our township, government, and community.
Ed Gutman, 25774 Branchester. Tonight at Temple Israel, there's a meeting going on also. Jonathan Greenbaum, I think it's Greenblatt, head of the ADL. And the purpose, throughout the United States, Michigan, Duke, you name it, Penn, Harvard, Yale, anti-Semitism rallies every day of the week. It's just out of control. Hate breeds hate. When people hear the comments that you made, whether they read it, heard about it, it just exacerbates the problem. It feeds into it, you know? It's just a spiral. It does no good. And personally, I don't care any explanations. All I want is an apology. That's it. Just want an apology. Can you do that? No. You can't do that. Can you?
Not a Q&amp;A process, please. No, no. Thank you. Number 43? 44? 45? What are you, 46?
47.
47? And 46, 45, 47? There we go. Please.
Hello. Hi. My name is Erit. I live in Farmington Hills. Anti-Zionism is anti-Semitism. That is a fact, not an argument in a debate. What is a Zionist? Well, we've covered that. Zionist is a person that believes in Israel's right to exist. So if you're not a Zionist, then you're an anti-Zionist, which is an anti-Semite, which I like to call a Jew-hater. It's much more simple and to the point. A Jew-hater or anti-Zionist today in America spends an extraordinary amount of time and energy in criticism of the Jewish State of Israel. They criticize it to an impossible standard and work tirelessly to find new ways to demonize our existence. If the only country you spend time criticizing and demonizing happens to be the Jewish one, you may just be a bigot, and we do not stand for bigotry in the United States of America. These anti-Zionists work with organized groups and sponsors that spread false narratives, rewrite history, and fund the demonization of the single Jewish nation on Earth, all according to the agenda of the Ayatollahs of Iran and Qatar. Let me be clear. Israel is just an appetizer for the mullahs of the evil Islamic regime. Israel is only the little cancer. America is the big cancer, as their aim is to annihilate Western civilization as we know it and implement Sharia law worldwide. They shout "Death to America" on our streets. They burn the American flag, and we allow them to flourish and give them platforms to spread their hate in the name of freedom of speech. We must call out the haters of freedom. Hate speech is not free speech. Israel... Thank you. Israel is fighting a defensive war. There is not and never has been any what's so-called apartheid or occupation. While our brethren are dying on the battlefield, we in the diaspora are fighting another front, the digital front, the lies and fake news and propaganda and discrimination here in America. While women in Iran are fighting for their freedoms and liberation from oppressive misogynistic laws, women in Michigan are standing with the enemies of freedom. Jewish children are bullied and assaulted, and we as a society are being othered for standing with our people.
Twenty seconds.
We are not... Yes. Divesting from Israel means boycotting and discriminating against your Jewish neighbors. We are not Jews with trembling knees. We have a long history of being hated based on false blood libels. This time, we are fighting back. This time, we have an army. Never again. La'olam lo'od, am Israel hi.
Hey, so I think we're now at 47?
She was 47.
47? So 48? 49? 50? And the person with...
Ifit.
Great. Welcome, sir.
I'm going to have the other five line up.
And anyone behind that? Yes, good point. Supervisor, 50, you know, 51 through 55, if you want to speak. Thank you for planning... You guys got it now.
My name is David Cutner. My P number is 12423. I've been a member of the State Bar for 53 years. I'm a disabled Vietnam vet with Agent Orange problems, but I'm still upright. You are a disgrace to the State Bar of Michigan.
Hi, my name is Orit. I am a proud Jewish woman, Israeli, and Zionist, and you call me scum of the earth. Well, I can say just one thing and very briefly, that the people who you call scum of the earth contributed so much to technology, medicine, everything. So calling us scum of the earth, uh-uh. I stand here very proud.
52? Or 53? 54?
Somebody's coming.
So if you're anywhere 60, or, you know, between 55, 54, and 60, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Mike McCready, 4957 Bloomfield Ridge. Geopolitics has no business in our township hall. I think this is really a bad... I feel for the board members to have to deal with this. I feel for the members of our community that have to sit and hear this speech that Stephanie gave. Stephanie, my understanding is you're a defense attorney, and if that was your closing argument, I think you lost your case. And as I'm a former state representative, I've sat through many speeches. I've never heard anything like what you spoke about tonight. And I'm sorry that you all have to sit here for hours to have to listen to all this, and I'm really so disappointed in all of this. And Stephanie, I really think if they censor you, it's not enough. I think you really have not lived up to your oath of office. If not, you violated it, and I believe you need to step down.
What number are you, ma'am?
59.
Please.
I'm Loretta Cooper. I live at 1074 Park Place Court in Bloomfield Hills. I am a proud Jewish woman, and I am a proud Zionist, and I have a couple of things to say. I will be very brief. It is to my understanding that the Board cannot remove Stephanie, correct? To censure her is not enough. It is also to my understanding that the Governor can remove her. Why has nobody gone to the Governor and asked that she be removed from this as her trustee? Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm on number 60. Anyone's got 60 to 65, if you want to speak? Please. Hi, John.
Hi. I'm John Frank, 1455 Lakewood.
What number do you have, by the way?
Sorry?
What number do you have?
65.
Excellent.
So trustee Faqee, this is a very direct comment to you. So trustee Faqih, this is a very direct comment to you. I'm an attorney. I'm a mediator. I was also head of the American Jewish Committee Detroit Office about 15 years ago. We opened up Jewish-Muslim dialogue within the Jewish community as a pilot program that's gone national within AJC, within partners that we found within the Muslim community. And the commonality, the religious commonality, the cultural commonality is significant enough that it's been a very powerful movement. Islamophobia and antisemitism are closely connected. And to hear a comment come from a member of that community directed at Jews was difficult to listen to. I want to approach you very specifically. This is a... I have Muslim Lebanese clients. This is... And I have a son in Israel. My client said to me this week, "I hope your family is safe and sound." A lot of craziness in the Middle East. I have lost a lot of family members this week in Lebanon. And I said, "So sorry to hear that. My son is safe, but nervous like everyone and hoping this will be over soon." And he said to me, "Same here. A lot of destruction everywhere." That's how we should approach this. So in your comments, where you said, not at the beginning and not at the end, that you wonder if we feel the pain, we do. We do. We all do. We all feel the pain. More than you can imagine, there are only 15 million of us in the world. Think how many there would be if we hadn't had 6 million of us destroyed. We live every day with the pain. Every day with the pain. So here's my appeal to you. You have a voice. You have a distinguished background. You have a platform. I'm happy to meet with you. My office is right down the street. Please consider using your voice for good.
So we're looking at number 66 through number 70. Remember, if you state your name for the record and let me know your number as well so I can keep track.
Sure. My name is Harrison Shewski, number 69.
Thank you.
I'm a freshman student at the Stephen M. Ross School of Business at the University of Michigan. I'm on my fall study break. This is not how I anticipated using my fall study break, but it is an important use of my time and of everybody's time. I'm a proud graduate of Franco-Jewish Academy. I'm wearing my FGA tennis hat this evening. I'm proud of our team. We just won the regional championship once again. And our school, our athletics, our community, as you can see, is stronger than ever before. Every day on campus, I wear my Magenda V necklace out. I wear my Israeli dog tag out to stand in solidarity with IDF soldiers. And every day, in the back of my mind, I'm concerned. I'm worried. I see protesters targeting me, not because they're not in favor of Israel, but as many of their signs indicate, they're not in favor or they don't support my right to be Jewish. They don't support my right to exist on planet Earth. And so every day, I live in the back of my mind with fear of if these people will attack me or come at me simply because of my faith, simply because of my background. My grandfather, scapegoat Grams, in Russia had to move to China and took a boat to the United States with his relatives. And for these comments to call me the scum of the earth, I am the scum of the earth for being worried about my faith every day. I know with everyone here today, Israelis, Jews, we would never attack anyone because of their faith, because the IDF is the Israeli Defense Forces, not the offensive forces, the defense forces. We simply want to defend our right to exist, to defend our identity. We don't want to launch any offensive attack. And yet, we're the scums of the earth. I hope these comments are taken very seriously. I hope the public comments are taken very seriously and swift action is taken. Thank you very much.
70, 71, 72, 73. Okay. How about anyone who's got 74 through 80? Great. Thank you.
Can anyone hear me? Perfect. Hi, my name is Adar, 2883 Somerset Boulevard. I got to hand it to my Jewish community. They drove out, or they came out here in doves to hold you accountable for your horrific posts that you made over the past several days. And this isn't the only offensive post you made, by the way, calling us scum. I'm going to read a post you shared on your Instagram story less than 48 hours ago. "As a kid, I wondered how Germans allowed the Holocaust to happen. In the past year, I have heard why. I am too busy. I don't want to lose my job. Both sides are bad. Protesting won't do anything. It's not my issue to speak about. I don't want to lose my friends." Are you trying to distort your narrative to equate it to the Holocaust? Like, seriously? Where are you getting at? On top of that, I mean, after seeing and hearing what you said today, it validated my perception that you're not interested in learning from this community. I came in here with good faith, hoping that we would foster some dialogue and bring change. I believed in the goodwill of people, but after what I saw tonight, that validated it, that you are not interested in hearing us out. And how do I know this? You literally made an effort to mobilize the anti-Israel community four hours ago. See you in a couple hours. That doesn't sound like you're willing to learn. And I agree with the public that a censor isn't enough to right such a wrong. And I do agree that the governor and our amazing Attorney General need to step in and hold you accountable and call for your immediate resignation.
Just remind me, what number are you?
79.
Thank you.
Behind me.
Wonderful.
My name is Ben Seungai Sinski from 74, 75 Wing Lake Road. I'm a rabbi here in Bloomfield, and I just want to, interestingly, point out that what you have accomplished here today is something that very few have accomplished. So many Jewish people came over an hour early to an event. Not usual.
No food.
No food either. Coming from Kipper. Another interesting point is that we have here in the crowd Jews from all different communities. Very few of them could actually agree on many things, but we're all here together for one point, which tells us that you reached actually a core of Jewish identity. Not everybody over here actually identifies as Zionist, or if you'd ask them point-blank, "Are you Zionist?" But they're all very proudly Jewish. And what you've brought out from deep inside within them is the belief, the ancient Jewish belief, that the Jewish homeland belongs in the land of Israel. This is a promise given in the Bible to Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob.
Thank you.
And by the way, wasn't the first person to compare us to the earth. Abraham was told that the descendants will be like the dust of the earth, but that was a blessing. I don't think he meant it that way. This is a disgrace, and I'm proud that we all came out together to show support for the Jewish brethren in Israel, who are really the ones that you are attacking. And I hope, once you realize that your supporters aren't here, that you don't really have supporters, and you'll apologize.
My name is Mandy Garver. I'm a 30-year resident of Bloomfield Township, and I live at 4680 Pickering Road. I'm also the immediate past president of the Greater Detroit Region of Hadassah, the Women's Zionist Organization of America. I'm a proud American, a proud Jew, and a proud Zionist. Yes, I am one of the scum that our elected official, Stephanie Faqih, who supposedly represents me, refers to in her heinous post. We live in a community that is diverse and inclusive. We're a tapestry of different views, religions, races, politics, and traditions. That's our greatest strength. Respect for each other is a cornerstone of a society such as ours. It's the baseline. It's the starting point on which you build. The hate mongering Ms. Faqih engaged in and continues to engage in has no place in our community, much less in our governing body. Her blatant antisemitism completely disqualifies her from serving as a trustee. Ms. Faqih has proven beyond a shadow of a doubt that she is unfit to represent residents such as me in our township, and I call for her immediate censure and resign.
86 through 90. You're 82? Okay, great. Thanks, Alan.
I am Alan Wolf, and I also am a 30-year resident because I live with that woman. I am one of the American scum labeled by Ms. Faqih in her vile posts. I am an American Zionist. I was named after my grandfather, Abraham Heilpern, who was also called scum by government officials. He died in Tereshin Stat concentration camp. He died at the hands of Nazis, who would have been glad at one point if he had simply emigrated to some other country. But there was no other country that would take him. Neither would those countries take countless other members of my immediate family. They too died at the hands of the Nazis. After 6 million of us were murdered, we said, "Never again." Our answer to that came on May 14, 1948, the date that a Jewish nation was reestablished on the ancient land of Judea, the land of the Jews. All we want as Jews is to live in peace with our neighbors, whether it's here in Bloomfield Township or in the land of Israel. Our religion teaches us that every life is precious, whether that's a child, a Jew, or even a Hezbollah fighter. But Ms. Faqih, understand one thing. When we are attacked by those in power, whether it is Hamas, Hezbollah, Iran, or a member of the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees, we will fight back. When you dehumanize Jews, as you did, labeling us scum, you give a license to others to treat us as less than human. That is not acceptable. I applaud the statements made by each of the other members of this board, but it's not enough. A censure by the full board is necessary to send a clear message that Bloomfield Township rejects ethnic intimidation and celebrates its diversity by welcoming all people to live, work, and prosper in this community. Thank you very much.
So Alan was 82, so 83, 85?
90.
90?
Is there anyone before 90?
Anyone before 90?
Do I go first?
Go ahead.
This is, I'd like to educate you a little. This is a post that I made in the Detroit News in response to a column about Israel and Zionism. Antisemitism has always been antisemitism. Only one nation-state in the entire world has had its legitimacy questioned, and that is the Jewish state, the state of Israel. Get it? Further, only two states in all of history had existed until now on the land that had been called Judea, by which the Romans renamed Syria-Palestina, to stick it to the Jews. Those states are both Jewish. With all the talk these days of quote-unquote indigenous peoples, especially on the left, the Jewish people reclaiming their land should be celebrated. I'd like to make a comment about the Arab world, but I want to distinguish, and Muslim world, but I want to distinguish between individual Arabs and Muslims and the Arab and Muslim world. They have no right or moral authority to lecture Israel and the idea of how to conduct war. They violate the norms of war when they attack innocent people and then hide behind their own innocent people. Ironically, it's the Jews who value Arab and Muslim life more than Hamas or Hezbollah.
For the record... Oh, hi, welcome.
Hello.
Good to see you again. And your name and number?
Avi Mendelson, 87. Stephanie, I believe in our shared humanity, and I want to continue to believe in our shared humanity. I think something that we all probably have in common here is that we're all very exhausted with what's going on in the Middle East, and we want it to be over. We want peace. We want all the fighting to be done. I think it will require a lot of courage from people on all sides, 6,000 miles away and over here. I think people showed a lot of courage showing up tonight and speaking into a microphone. It's kind of scary in front of people. It takes courage to sit there and to hear stuff that I'm sure is very hard to hear. It takes courage for people to make a stand and to make supportive statements. And I know an apology is, would probably be very tough. It's scary to have gone in a certain direction and to have people say things to you, correct you, level things at you. But to move forward in a positive way, it'll take courage. And I think an apology would be a really honorable act of courage. And I hope that's a path that you take, because I think it would leave everybody here feeling better and a little bit more whole, rather than just kind of continuing with the bickering, the back and forth. And again, I think it would be very difficult. It'd be a very difficult thing for you to do, to say sorry, to take things that we're told here and take that moment. You know, there's ego, there's the people you know, there's... I just think this is a very tough moment. I'm sure this is tough for you. I don't want you to take all the negativity and decide, you know, actually, I don't want to call it negativity, but I don't want you to take all this and dig in your heels in this moment. I want you to do the courageous thing, because I think that'll be a liberating feeling. And I just, I want that for you going forward. I don't want you to go from this moment, stuck in this moment, like, let's move on. I think we've showed up, shared our side. We need you to apologize, and in that way, we all kind of come together a little bit more whole from this moment, and it can be actually a pretty happy, good moment. And why don't we make a good moment out of this as opposed to just continuing a fight? So, thank you.
Thank you. We have 88 or 89. So we have 90 here. Thank you. And your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Ruth Tamara Pobreski. I live in West Bloomfield, Walnut Lake, and Middlebelt since 2007. And many years ago, my family and myself, we came to the United States as to save heaven. It was an American dream, but I wasn't dreaming of being called a scum. We are here because of your statement, because it was offensive to me personally, my family, my people. I don't know why you brought up events of October 7th of last year, but it clearly shows that you either don't have an idea of the true events or you intentionally twist the facts. Israel did not invade Gaza. Nobody stepped into Gaza since 2006, except for providing utilities, humanitarian aid, medical help, funds, building roads, giving employment opportunities, and hoping for a better life for Palestinian people. On October 7th, people that you advocate for invaded Israel, butchered, murdered, raped, took hostages, burned our babies in the oven. What did you think Israel should have done? Say, "Oh, guys, come on. It's not nice. Don't do it again." When terrorists hide ammunition and dig tunnels under the babies' bedrooms, don't they know the consequences? You know, we Jewish people never called Muslims scum, never called them names. Terrorists, yes, they are terrorists. They are common enemies. You mentioned respect and unity. You do not unify the community. You poison the community, and you are disgrace to your people.
So just a reminder...
So just a reminder, wait, everybody, just a reminder that if there is discourse for the newer people in the room, this has been going on for quite a long time with peace, so just a reminder to level set for everybody new in the room. We listen to everybody equally. We don't cause discourse because we don't want you to have to be removed from the room. So for everybody new that didn't get to hear that earlier, everybody will have a time to speak, but when you're in the back causing trouble, we don't want to have to remove. So who's the next number?
Everybody who came in has a number, and we'll call each of those numbers up to speak. And your time is when you're called. If you're not here or don't want to speak, that's fine. So I think we just had number ninety. We're on, anyone's number ninety-one through ninety-five? If you'd like to come up and speak? Great. Ninety-two. Thank you, sir.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. I'm one of the scum.
And your name for the record?
Brad Walters.
Thank you.
I'm from West Bloomfield, and your kind of rhetoric doesn't just end at the Bloomfield Township. It spreads throughout all. But I'd like to change the scenario just a little bit and make you realize something. If you had been attacked by somebody who called you Muslim scum, the people on this board and this community who are Jewish would have been the first ones to rise to your defense. No other people understand what rhetoric and what words can do. We would have defended you. For you to have labeled us is a tragic violation of your oath, and all you've done is made it divisive within your community. You do owe us an apology. I don't think you can do that. I don't think you can rise to the occasion. I don't think you have that integrity. But I remain anxious to see whether you can. And if you do, you may even foster a dialogue that we have heard. But realize this, that the people in this room would have defended you. Would you have defended us? Evidently not.
Okay, any number ninety-five or below? So number ninety-six through one hundred? If you'd like to speak, please come up to the podium. One oh-one through one oh-five? If you've got those numbers, you're welcome, come on up and engage in public comment. One oh-seven, excellent. So one oh-seven through one ten, let's, come on up. Thank you, welcome.
I'm Jerry Kirshner. I live at eighty-seven Norton in Pontiac. My, one of my wife's family founded the businesses, some of the businesses in Pontiac, one of the synagogues in Pontiac. But I want to go back to my fraternity days. Let me, even before that. All of my life, I've understood and I've seen anti-Semitism, mostly historically, though. But when I was a young kid, and we did lose family in the Holocaust, I went to my grandma and I asked, you know, about her family in Europe and what had happened, and they used to communicate. Obviously, they would write letters back and forth. And I said, "Bubby, how did you know when you lost a family member?" She said they would stop writing. They were no longer able to communicate. Okay? In fraternity days, I had a fraternity brother, and oddly enough, a Jewish national, and our particular chapter, there were only five out of one hundred and fifty that were Jewish. And I had a brother who stood in the dining room, I can see it as I see it today, and said, "You know, Jerry, the only good Jew is a dead Jew." And I said, "Well, we're all done, Dave. That's it for us." I look at you, Stephanie, and I've been watching you all meeting long. And the one thing that I had always known about the idea of when you're wrong and when you, when you feel you're wrong and when you've been shown that you're wrong, is the idea of remorse. I have watched you for three hours now. All I see in your face is a smirk. There it is. A smile, a smirk, a sense of maybe entitlement? But all I can ask you to do, again, because I understand that you can't be removed, you can be censured. Censor is just a label at the moment. I would ask that you also resign about three minutes from now would be appropriate time. You have no business serving our community. You have no business at all being in the public, okay? If you choose to be somewhere else, if you choose to act the way you act, think the way you think, you're allowed to think any way you want to think, okay? But you're a public figure.
Twenty seconds.
And you're a disgrace.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Margot La, three-three-one-one Woodview Lake Road.
What number do you have with you, Margot?
I am one-ten.
Thank you.
And I did not plan on coming here to speak. I've been there since nineteen eighty-five, I believe, in that house. Stephanie, I'm also one of the scum that you call scum. I don't think of myself as that, but that's what you called me. Actions have consequences, and your actions, so deplorable, should have consequences. And as you sit there, as he said with your smirk, you really should resign immediately. And I hope that you do, because an apology certainly won't cut it for me. I don't know if it'll cut it for other people. But what you did was just awful.
Wait, again, to the public, you're correct. No one has been shouting for two hours, and that is a sign of disrespect and discourse. So this is the last comment to everybody in this room. Shouting is going to get you removed. Please stop so you are not removed.
Okay, that was number one-ten. So if you've got one-eleven through one-twenty, come on up. Let me know your name and number you've got. That'd be really great.
One-fourteen.
Thank you.
My name is Marla Zwos, and I live in Southfield, Michigan. I will not address Ms. Faqih. She has already decided where I stand, so I really am going to reserve my comments for the trustees here. I was notified of this meeting from people in three different countries. I just want to assure you that all eyes are on what is happening here and what you decide to do after this hearing tonight is going to have, I want to call it, not lightly, global consequences. The statements that were made by Ms. Faqih did not happen in a vacuum. They were fomented by people who've made comments before her. And if we let this go, that will foment additional comments like that coming after her. I was the general counsel of several large companies here in Michigan, and I can, I feel your pain. I have done many investigations. I have had to decide who is a liar, who is worthy, who is not worthy of saving. And these are very, very difficult decisions, and I feel for all of you. But when I saw her tonight not only mislead us by telling us that she was interested in learning, because I know if she was interested in learning, she would have learned something between the time that those statements were found out and tonight's hearing. She would have also learned, she and I are actually from this, have had a similar experience, a common experience, which is that we both went to Fordham Law School. For those of you who don't know, Fordham is a Jesuit law school, one of the most inclusive and tolerating environments one could ever exist in. If she did not learn at Fordham Law School how to be inclusive and tolerant, and she did not learn in law school how to think critically and to accept a difference of viewpoints, she is not going to learn now. And so I am looking to you to help us, the Jewish community, stop this growth in its tracks. Stop the growth and proliferation of this kind of comment. I know that the, we all know who a congressman who has set an example for this type of behavior right here in Michigan, again, known throughout the world. And wherever I go, when I say I'm from Michigan, it is mentioned to me every single time. Let's not let Michigan continue to be an embarrassment. Let's stand up. Let's do what is right. Let's make sure that we maximize the consequences for this woman, because if we let this go, it will happen again. Thank you.
My number is one-nineteen.
Thank you.
My name is Wendy, and until about a week ago, I was really content and even proud to be a resident of Bloomfield Township. In the Jewish tradition, we say our names by being the daughter or son of somebody. I'm the daughter of somebody who came to the United States after being chased out of Western Europe by the Nazis. My father left Belgium as a very young child and was hidden in both France and Portugal by friendly families. His family then sent letters to six different countries asking for acceptance into their countries. I've always considered myself so fortunate that the United States said yes, and that's how I've ended up here. I took great pains to raise my family in a community that was diverse and accepting, and acceptance is what I taught my children. I didn't teach them tolerance. I taught them acceptance. And now so many people have addressed their comments to the person who made the original posts. I'd like to address my comments to the rest of you, because we already know where she stands. I mentioned my children. We now have a brand-new generation in my family, a little baby. It pains me to think about raising her in a community where your colleague said, "Everybody feels safe." How would she know? And how could we possibly feel safe when we're being called scum, just like my father's family was when they left Western Europe? So I would implore you to please censure your colleague and demand her immediate resignation for the safety of all of us.
So we're at number one-twenty. Anyone who's at one-twenty, one-thirty, come on up. Let me know your number and your name and address, please.
One-twenty-six.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Richard Jacobs, live on Pomona Colony. Ms. Faqih, I know you cannot respond, and I find that unfortunate. We'll, maybe you can take these questions and answer them in your heart and maybe on your public post. Will you admit that Hamas is a terrorist organization? Will you admit that Hamas hides behind civilians and invites retribution for their invasion of Israel? And they are hiding behind civilians and inviting their demise? This is not my quote. I did not originate this, but I think everyone can agree that if the Arabs were to lay down their arms, there would be peace. If Israel were to lay down their arms, there would be no Israel. Thank you.
Okay, there are one-twenty-seven, one-thirty. Anyone, one-thirty to one-forty? If you've got that number, want to speak and public comment, you're welcome, come on up. Let me know your name and your number. Thank you.
Everyone?
Thank you.
My name is Benji. I'm a former resident of Bloomfield Township. I'm a neighbor to Bloomfield Township. I have family in the room who are residents of Bloomfield Township. We are proud Americans, and we're proud Zionists. I won't repeat all the good points that were made tonight, but I will make three additional points specific to the things that were said tonight by Ms. Faqih. Focus of tonight's Bloomfield Township, focus of tonight should be Bloomfield Township business, and that's it. The statements made here, a lot of them were not that focus. When siding on the side of humanity, when you said that you're siding on the side of humanity, that should include your constituents, whether they're scum or not, or whether they're hostages or not, or whether they're the same religion or not. And number three, quoting and weaponizing Eli Wiesel, a Holocaust survivor, is despicable. And it's a long, it's on a long list of despicable things that were said tonight by trustee. I doubt anything actionable can be done tonight by this forum, but I hope that we as a community are stronger and more united than we ever have and understand what we need to do to keep each other safe and healthy and moving forward.
Anybody between one-thirty, one-thirty-one and one-forty? What number do you have, sir?
One-forty-one.
One-forty-one? Anyone before that who wants to speak? One-forty? Please, go ahead. Well, here we go.
Salute the other veteran in here. Agent Orange hasn't gotten yet.
Can you speak into the, sir? Can you speak into the microphone so everybody can hear you outside? Sir? No, please speak into the microphone, because this is also being aired.
Okay. Oh, I see. Anyways, I just want to say that everybody just play nice in the sandbox. That's all I'm trying to ask. Even the ladies in the back who just came in, welcome, welcome, you know? Let's start with an open mind. Myself, I'm like this guy here, second generation. My parents survived this and that.
And by the way, your name for the record?
O, Sigmund Glazer, Oak Park.
Thank you, Sigmund.
And I bet every person in this room came to America for one single reason: freedom, liberty, justice for all. Now, we do have baggage. I should be hating every German, maybe? Maybe not. But I'm not. Here in America, I have to love every single person every day. I don't care if, whatever you are, if you're wearing pink, Jew, whatever it is. So my statement is, just try to calm down, start all over. Let's get this gathering. I don't want to see this kind of gathering. I want to see a party. I want to do a horror. I'm a party man.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Joel Young. I'm a resident of Bloomfield Township. I want to thank you for conducting civility. This has been all about civility and the rule of law. We listened to the attorney, we listened to a legal opinion, and Mr. Shosek, I think, started it and really significantly summed up the issues, and so many brilliant, historically accurate statements. Stephanie, you and I share some things in common. You went to the University of Michigan, I went to the University of Michigan. I think of the, you grew up in this area. I think of the people that took care of you, that taught you, many Jews, many Zionists. This is an absolute personal failing on your part. You should really be ashamed of yourself. And to the board, I'm asking you, like many of my residents as well, I encourage you to censor Stephanie, and I think the proper thing to do is for you to resign.
So that was one-thirty-one. Anyone between one-thirty-two, one-forty? If you'd like to speak and public comment, you're welcome. Okay, how about one-forty through one-forty-five? One-forty-two, thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Siegel Propus, and I'm a resident of Bloomfield Township. You know, I've been watching you, Stephanie, all night, and all I see is defiance in your face. All I heard was defiance in your explanation of your behavior. You said you believe in humanity. You said you don't believe in labels yet. That's exactly... That's exactly what you did. You labeled us as scum, and you reduced our humanity by saying that. So I don't believe your not sincere explanation of what you did and what you said. You said that you have pain at the destruction of family. We understand that. But you seem to have a warped sense of reality, or else you just don't live in a bubble. What's going on in Gaza and Lebanon would not be happening if it wasn't for hundreds of thousands of missiles over many years that Israel has tolerated without going back and attacking, and it wouldn't have happened after 10/7. And you seem to have a sense of entitlement about the destruction without recognizing why it happened. If our hostages were released, you wouldn't be having family that's hurt over there. It's a very simple reality that you just don't seem to understand. There have been thousands of missiles. In addition, the ratio of combatant to civilians is the smallest in any war in the history of war, and that Israel's, Israel is the most moral army in the world. I think you need to learn some history and get out of the scum of your own mind and belief systems if you want to move beyond this. Thank you.
So, everybody, please, can I?
Again, please, this is, and I need the police to understand this, we are at the point where we are not tolerating any more inviting within the group or any more yelling. So please, if the next time that I have to call it out, we will have to start removing people. So I'm, this is the last, there are three strikes. We're at the third strike. You have, you have been respecting your neighbors for over two hours. This is an exemplary, I mean, I cannot even explain to you how wonderful you all have been tonight, all of you. We need to continue, no matter how tired everyone is. You all deserve to be heard. So please, no more fighting in the group, no more of that. Please, please.
To 43 through 50? You've got that number? You'd like to speak, 143 through 150? 151 through 160?
Hi, my name is Brian Fantish. I am a Bloomfield Township resident.
What number do you have, Brian?
157.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mrs. Faqih, I'm going to be a gentleman, and I see under your name it says trustee. I was raised by my parents and my family to treat people with respect. I have a six- and three-year-old son, two sons. I have a wife who's here with me as well. We don't preach hate in our house, but I keep seeing under your name it says trustee, and you are entrusted by the community, your constituents, and everyone in Bloomfield Township for you to make fair, impartial decisions. You also sit on the zoning board of appeals, and you make, you are supposed to make fair and impartial decisions when you sit there and treat Jewish residents and other people with respect. And I feel really bad for your members up here, the trustee board members. This is supposed to be, and from what I have read in history, an unprecedented situation that occurred. You had deep-down emotion, you had thought emotionally, psychologically, to take the affirmative action and type what you typed that day on social media, because you just felt over the years of hate, or whatever it may be, to type that. So this is something that is deep down. This isn't a mistake. And so if this is an unprecedented situation, and people are calling for censure and resignation, the board can do an emergency action and enact a bylaw for you to resign. This isn't something that we have to wait from October 15th, 2024, to November 20th for you to write out your term so you can make other unfounded discretionary decisions that could impact this community. And so I implore the board to make that emergency vote, enact emergency bylaw, that if there's any hate speech, any hatred, anything that you wrote down and may continue to write down in your thoughts, to kick you off the board. Just because it's not there now doesn't mean they can't do it. If it's unprecedented, they can do it. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Just so I know, your number is?
Well, I'm 160, but I think there are some 150s still left.
Are there?
Everybody's so polite, they're just...
That's so nice. It's wonderful. Thank you. 160, and your name is?
Wendy Goldberg. I live near Walnut Lake Road in Inglewood, and I thank the board for organizing this meeting. So I would like to say, not only to Stephanie, but to all of the board, a couple of things. One is, I grew up in a household, I was fortunate enough to grow up in a household in Philadelphia where we were not allowed to use the word hate. However, we had lots of arguments, and we expressed ourselves strongly, and everybody had different opinions. So we, we didn't become shy wallflowers just because we didn't use the word hate. We just learned to dive, dive deeper and learn about people. Several years ago, I spent a week at a place called the Chautauqua Society. Some people will know about it. Other people, I recommend you look it up. There are lots of people represented at that, sort of like a camp in the summer, but the week I went, there were leaders from all over the world, governmental leaders, scholars, people from literature, clergy of all types. All religions that I'm aware of are represented there and lived there during the summer. We heard an amazing speaker several times named Amy Spitalnik. She was part of a group of people, including some attorneys, who successfully got the civil suit against the Charlotte neo-Nazis, because while I don't want people to be arrested for speech, I am a free speech person in terms of the law, but she very carefully and clearly demonstrated, as have many others, that hate speech is not free speech and that hate speech has consequences. Stephanie, I've read a little bit about you, and you actually do, you've done a lot of good things, and you have a lot of good works, and they stand. They don't go away just because of this incident. One of the things I hope we all can learn is that when a really terrible offense has occurred, citing like, well, don't be upset because I'm really good at something else, they stand, and I recognize them, and I salute you and I thank you for those good things. But tonight was not the night to kind of yes-but the situation. And I think that comes with maturity, and it doesn't matter the age, and it doesn't even matter the number of degrees. So I'm going to say something that's maybe a little bit...
You only got 20 seconds to do it.
Okay. We all can relate to the suffering of many people, and we should, and you can express But I don't think you're ready for an apology. I'm not somebody who's going to refuse it. I want you to study. Take up those offers from the rabbis. Take up those offers from the Holocaust Center. Spend a week at the Chautauqua Center and talk to different people. You have a lot of work to do.
Your time is up.
And I think you'll be rewarded for it if you do follow this path.
I understand you've got a number in the 150s.
Yes.
Excellent.
I relinquished it to my friend. I relinquished it to my friend.
Thank you.
Out of good manners that I was taught at home.
Wonderful.
My name is Meryl Goldberg. I live on Kipps Gate Bend. I don't want to be repetitive, because many of the things that have been going through my mind have been said before. And I think that Wendy, just before me, said something very significant, and that is, you need an education, and a very deep and long one. It takes time. It takes many of us Jews 30 or 40 years to understand and learn who we are and what we are. And I appreciate the board holding this meeting. I think it's very constructive, and kudos to all of you. The one thing I do want to say is that, as parents, one of the things that we try to teach our children is to accept responsibility for our actions. I think that's a good, moral, ethical, upright thing to do, and I'd like you to think about that. The other thing I want to say is to the board, I beseech you to take some kind of action. If you do not, you are saying that this, we approve of this happening again and again and again, and that is not appropriate.
Anybody else in the 150s? Okay, so moving on, 161 through 170? If you have that number and you'd like to make a public comment? There's a couple moments.
Matthew Schloss.
Hi, Matthew.
I wasn't planning on saying anything tonight. This was just an ad hoc thing. But from the moment that I saw the posting that you made, it was truly heartbreaking, so disappointing, to see that somebody that is supposed to be a professional, someone who's supposed to be trusted, someone who's supposed to be a voice for the people, would speak this way. I look out in this crowd, and I wonder where your family is, where your parents are, where your brothers and sisters are. I know that if I was in your situation, being served up as you are tonight, my family would be here to support me regardless of that situation. I can only imagine what they think of you in this situation.
My family's in Lebanon. Thanks for asking.
So this is a Q and A. She can, she can respond. You are a disgrace to this community. You are a danger to this community. You're a disgrace to your family regardless of where they are. You have no business being in the role that you are in. You have no business running for any type of role anytime in the future where you are the leader or speaker to any group of people. Again, I feel for your family, your friends, and anybody that knows you within the community.
Okay, I'm looking for numbers. I'm looking for numbers. There are 170 to 180. Hi. What number are you?
89.
Oh, great.
Hi, my name's Amy. I live near 14 in Telegraph. And I had no intention of speaking today, but in the past couple weeks, there's been multiple events that have been anti-Semitic in our community, between the propaganda that was left on people's driveways in many communities in Oakland County, the vandalism at Federation, and these statements. I grew up feeling very comfortable in the community. I never felt anti-Semitism, never. I went to a school where the Jewish kids, the Muslim kids, the Chaldean kids, that was the group, that was who hung out together. My kids are in high school now. I fear for them. It's the first time that I've really felt like it could be Nazi Germany, and I never felt that way before. I would hear people talk about anti-Semitism, and I thought people blew it out of proportion. I really felt that people jumped to that too quickly. And this week, I've thought about that. I've thought about my kids being victims to that, and what could happen to them in our community. And as trustees, you can't allow someone like this to represent us. I believe in conversations. I believe in trying to make a difference. We don't learn if we don't talk to each other. My son, who's in high school, reached out last year to a social worker at one of the Muslim schools on his own, without talking to me, to say, "I would like to get together with some of the kids at your school." This was after October 7th, so that we can talk, not with adults there, not with teachers, not with a special forum, just high school kids, Jewish and Muslim, to talk and learn from each other. I was shocked. This is not a social kid. He did this on his own, and the response he got was that any of the kids she reached out to weren't interested, or their parents wouldn't allow it. We need to have conversations to be better people, all of us. You're not an example of that. This is not an example of trying to work together and learn from each other. And for all, everyone's spoken up about what's going on in the Middle East. Honestly, we all have our views on that. We're not in the Middle East. We're in Bloomfield Township.
20 seconds.
This is about how we treat each other, not how other people treat each other halfway across the world. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone have number 180 through 189? Oh, 177, welcome, sir.
Thank you. I'm Bob Terra. I live in West Bloomfield. I've served on boards of a number of different civil rights and human rights organizations in my life. I do not identify with any particular religion. I do know a lot about politics. The trustee has tried to drive a wedge into this community, and because of the demographics, she's not been successful in driving a wedge. But she has been successful in obtaining a great deal of publicity. So my comment is that there is a political career for you outside of Bloomfield Township. And I know you'll find a political consultant to help you leverage this vicious attack which drives a wedge in our community and in our society. You can leverage that into a political career, and I wish you well in that.
Thank you. And let's see, 185, thank you. Your name?
Hi, my name is Heather Burnham. I'm from Waterford. I'd like to start out by saying my deepest and most heartfelt condolences for your family. I can't imagine what they're going through. I wasn't going to speak today, but hearing some of the comments, I felt compelled to. My grandfather is a Holocaust survivor, and I feel like it's very important for me to be here. My great-grandfather fought in World War I, obviously with the Germans. After the war, he talked about how he felt tricked into defending poor, poor Germany. And when he saw the destruction that he was causing and that his people were causing, and that was just happening because that's what was going on, he became deeply and strongly anti-war. My grandfather, when he came here and they lost, I need to emphasize, they lost the majority of their family. My grandfather and his parents had to escape on a boat from France to get here, and only because they saw the signs early. When he got here, he joined the Navy. He's proud to be an American. It was his greatest pride, actually. The one thing that I remember him telling me is that being critical of something wrong is not bad, no matter who is doing it. I've heard a lot of people speaking, some saying very Islamophobic and anti-Arab things, and I've heard some people, and I have heard some people make points where I'm like, oh, there is some humanity. That's what I want to speak to today, to the people who had some humanity. Being critical when there is clearly something wrong is not a bad thing. It's important. I, when I look at the sources and I look at the IDF news and I look at Israeli TikToks, what I see is wrong. Hearing that people are defending the rapes of Palestinian prisoners in jail is disgusting. As a survivor of childhood sexual assault, as someone who has suffered for being a lesbian, as someone who has been unhoused for a short amount of time, I know what it's like to suffer, and I don't wish that on anyone. And I can't even imagine what the innocent Palestinian civilians are going through, or the people in Lebanon, or anywhere that's suffering from a genocide. And what I think is important is that we should all be able to agree on that and take a stand against it. Thank you for your time and for the chance to speak here.
Thank you. Thank you. So 186, 190, 186, thank you.
Hello. My name is Angela Burnham, and I'm from Waterford. I am the granddaughter of a Holocaust survivor. My grandfather was a part of the Navy and was a brilliant and quiet man. He was extremely humble and always took great care of his family. Whenever any of us needed advice, he was the one we all asked. However, once my cousins had asked him about his past and how he never told us that he was Jewish, he froze, stuck in his mind reliving multiple nightmares from his past. It was the first time I had ever seen him become scared and lost. It became a hushed subject, and it was only after his death we learned more about how his family escaped Germany, about how his aunts, uncles, cousins, all went into concentration camps, abused, tortured, missing, or eventually murdered. Each story more terrible than the next, and I don't have the time or the stomach to tell. I wish I could have met this part of my family. I wish someone would have helped my family during the Holocaust. I wish people were braver. I could have saved them. You know, get a second chance when it comes to life, and you can live with the thought that when you look at me, you look at all those inflicted by genocide, and tell me you refuse to help. It's our duty to stop such monstrosities from continuing. I learned this saying, "Never again," and it means never again for anyone.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry about your family. I give my condolences, and we're all here for you. Appreciate you. Thank you.
So 187. Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Rabia. I live at 14 in Telegraph. I'm a Bloomfield Township resident, and I also express my condolences for your family as well, Ms. Stephanie. And I'm born and raised in New York, so I'm very, very, grew up with many, many diverse races, religions, Jewish, Christian, Protestant. I went to Catholic school for my majority of my elementary and middle school years. So I like to, I like to think of myself as a citizen of America, a citizen of the world. I've, you know, met many, many people throughout my life. I think when, you know, recently we had that incident where in Farmington, I believe, where there was a break-in and somebody, you know, a man was murdered in his home, presented as a DTE worker, and that elicits fear in all of our communities, West Bloomfield, Bloomfield Hills. And we all say, "Oh, my goodness, you know, I don't want that to happen to me. What are we gonna do? What are we gonna do?" And being, seeing what's going on in Gaza and now spilling on to Lebanon, that is a true fear. When you see what's going on at one border, you fear what's gonna happen in your borders. You know, like she said, you hear about rapes of men, babies being targeted, shot in the head. We've had physicians come back from Gaza, talk about their experiences of the traumatic injuries that they've seen, sniper shots to children. I mean, this is, this is, these are atrocities beyond comprehension. And I don't want my taxes, this comes down to an American issue for me, too. My taxes go over to this. I don't want my taxes being sponsored in this conflict. At the end of the day, we have a healthcare crisis in this country. We have a major transportation problem in this country. We have hurricanes. We have all of this going on in this country. I don't want to be the crumbly parent who gave the child the gun.
So, oh, hi, what number do you have? 188, perfect.
That's what we just asked the captains. Sorry, one quick question. It does appear that some have come in with bags. Of all the new people, can we make sure that those are taken back out to the car? Because the rule was for today, no bags. It does appear more keep coming in. They were supposed to be taken to the, no one was allowed in with bags, so if you do want to remain in the room, just so you know, please take them back to your car. They cannot remain in this room. There's no bags. No bags, no backpacks, no purses. They should not have gotten past the checkpoint. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So if you're gonna stay after your comment, just so you know, you can't stay in this room after your comment with that bag, and anybody else as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I am Semitic. Palestinians are Semitic. You know what it's like to live in the West Bank? We are driven out of our houses at gunpoint, and our houses are then given to people from Brooklyn, Miami, or Bloomfield Hills who decided to steal our homes. We're not allowed to live on the land that we have lived on for thousands of years. We're not allowed to walk on certain roads. We're not allowed to go to certain schools. We're not allowed to ride on certain trains. Palestinians are not allowed to drink from the same water as the Israelis, and the water is routinely shut off in the West Bank. There are checkpoints everywhere we go, every hundred meters. We have to be checked up and down invasively. We have Israelis, there are cameras that has a color-coded system. If the color-coded system says green, we're allowed to walk. If it says orange or red, we have to be taken and detained. Do you understand this is apartheid? What is it like to live in Gaza? In the past 200 days, over 40,000 Palestinians have been killed by Israeli attacks on Gaza. These are just the corpses with names. These are just the corpses. Thousands of bodies have been shredded, blurred, recognition, or are still under the rubble. The Lancet Medical Journal estimates 180,000 people have been murdered. Over 16,000 children have been murdered, with another child killed or wounded every 10 minutes. Imagine how many kids have been killed while we've been sitting here? Over 17,000 children have become orphaned. Israel has thrown 90,000 pounds of explosives on an area the size of Detroit. What do you think will happen if you throw something that is five times the explosive power of Hiroshima on an area the size of Detroit?
Everybody, please, let her continue.
90% of Israelis are Ukrainian, Polish, Eastern European in origin. They came from Ashkenazi. That's why DNA tests are illegal in Israel. Look it up. Look it up. The ancient Jewish tribes, the ancient Jewish tribes were a minority in the area, and they converted to Islam. They are the Palestinians. The indigenous people are the Palestinians. The Israelis are invaders. 10,000 Palestinians are being held hostage in Israel, 10,000, including children under the age of 10 years old. They are repeatedly raped and tortured, and the Israeli government literally had a meeting to decide that it was okay to rape Palestinians. 500 Lebanese were murdered in one day by Israel. The Israeli government already openly declared that they want to take Lebanon, Syria, Jordan, KSA. The United Nations, International Criminal Court, World Health Organization, Amnesty International, Oxfam International, Children Without Borders, Save the Children, Human Rights Watch, International Red Cross, and others attest that this is the most documented genocide in history. Zionism is ethnic supremacy. Zionism is ethnic supremacy, and Israel is a tyrant state. We, thank you, thank you, Stephanie, for standing with the children under the rubble.
Thank you.
Hey, no, she, stop, please. Again, I implore everybody, you see what happens when we talk about the loudest voice? Sometimes the loudest voice is not the strongest voice. So again, we remind you from hours ago, it was very nice and very good, and everybody's listening. I couldn't understand a word that was just said. So I need you to understand, if you want to be heard, please speak in a normal tone, because these microphones, as you can hear, if you really want all seven of us to hear you, please speak in a normal tone. Please be respectful of each other, and certainly, everybody was patient for hours. Please do not laugh and be disparaging as well. No matter if somebody has your opinions or not, you are here to listen. But again, please, the more you scream, the less we can understand you.
Okay, so 188.
Next.
195, anybody? 188, 195?
I couldn't understand a word.
Come on down, please.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Nebiel Seder. I'm from Lebanon, originally from Lebanon, and have been resident of Oakland County for 45 years. I'm a 17-year member of JVP. I'm a member of, if not now, Not in My Name, and yes, I'm a member for Birmingham Temple, renamed to Center of Humanistic Judaism. And I've been attending Birmingham Temple since the late Churunwine established the synagogue, humanist synagogue. I was a former member of Seeds of Peace, and we hosted Shimon Peres in 2001, and a former member of J Street. I was also selected as a peace observer by the United States State Department, along with four Jewish Americans, four Jewish American and four Arab Americans, to meet with Palestinian youth, Israeli youth, and adults to talk about considered peace observers in the Middle East. They flew us to Otis Field, Maine, Akaba, Jordan, and Bosnia. We spent 10 days in Bosnia, talking to children about the effect of war, children and educators and clergies. So I think needless to say that I can pass the antisemite test. I consider myself to be pro-Semite, since I happen to be on myself, too. I'm Lebanese myself. I can definitely have an art discussion about what Stephanie said, what she wrote. Now, what I'm trying to say here is, the debate is how it was said, what she said, that's definitely something can be discussed, but that's not really all that I'm here for tonight. Many in the American communities, including the Jewish communities, of which I list, I give you guys the list of organizations that I'm with, so I'm around Jews all day long, every day. In fact, I have many more Jewish friends than I have any Arab friends, many more. Many in the American communities, including Jewish communities, condemned and protested the wars on Vietnam, Cambodia, Iraq, and yes, Ukraine. Do you remember that? Ukraine. We all jumped up and down when Russia attacked Ukraine, for good reasons, by the way, but attacked Ukraine. But can you please let me finish? I'm from Lebanon. My entire family is there. They've been escaping from place to place. Our village has been bombed. My mother's grave, next to my mother's grave, who passed away on February 1st, we could not go visit the grave because they bombed next to the grave three times, an area called Dalback, where there is no rockets, there's no fire, there's no Hezbollah fighters, there is not a single rocket that was fired from there. Yet they bombed it three times. I came back here April 19th. Oh, sorry, I'm running out.
You are. Thank you for noticing. I apologize.
Anyway, all I want to say is, we should all be working together instead of working against each other, and I did not hear one word of that here tonight. Thank you.
So we're 192. Anyone with 192 to 200, if you'd like to speak?
Which number?
196.
Great, thank you.
My name is Cassie. I was also not planning to speak tonight. It's been very eye-opening. I heard a lot about how central Zionism is for many Jewish people, but it has also been very eye-opening how few people, I believe, one, acknowledge the pain and the suffering of civilians in the Middle East. I also know Jewish people who do say "Not in My Name," and I have heard people tonight who identified themselves as Jewish and Zionist, which indicated that they are different identities. I believe that we elect the trustees to stand up for values. Stephanie said that she stands up for humanity tonight, and I believe we can disagree with her position or with the way that she expressed her position, but I think we're debating a lot of things about words and hateful feelings, but nobody is acknowledging the context with which she said those words. It was about death and about violence, and I think we can criticize the way that someone stands up for their values, but she stood up for humanity, and I think when ideology drives hate, I think it's okay to speak up against that hate, and that's my belief, and I believe that we should all allow our elected trustees to speak on issues that are personal to them. She didn't bring it into her role on the Bloomfield Township Board, and I think, you know, just a lot of what we're talking about is a lot about words and feelings tonight, and I think we really missed the point in terms of what she was speaking about and the feelings of her family and the loss of lives. I think that's really about humanity. So, thank you.
I'm 199, so I don't know.
Perfect.
Yeah, hi, Charles Gaba. I live on Thornbrier Way here in Bloomfield Township. I grew up here in Bloomfield Township until I was in my early twenties, and I moved back here with my family about 14, 15 years ago, so that my son could grow up in this community. You know, I wasn't, I also wasn't planning on speaking this evening, so I don't have anything prepared, but trustee, if you can, I, when I came here, I was, I was planning on just observing, and I assumed that you would probably just apologize for saying something pretty damn offensive, and that that would be. And a lot of people ask me, well, you know, should she be censured? Should she resign? And I found, well, you're leaving the board in, what, like six weeks or something anyway? And so I was kind of like, well, if she does, fine. If she doesn't, basically, I was fine with whatever the board decided to do or not do, assuming you just apologized. And, but what I saw from your statement, clearly you have no intention of doing that. So, but you talked a lot about, you started out talking about definitions of words, about your definition of Zionism. You bring up the Webster Dictionary definition. Other people were giving other definitions, and I think it's important for people to understand that, to me, my understanding is the definition of Zionism, that yes, of course, support for, you know, an Israeli Jewish homeland in the region where it is now, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be all of it, and that there can't also be. I mean, I'm a strong opponent of a two-state solution, which seems pretty remote at this point, but I don't see why, long-term, why that couldn't be what happens. And, you know, while I was waiting out there, I bumped into my cousin, and we're both very politically active. He is a, but we cannot be any more different politically. He is a staunch MAGA Republican. I am a very, pretty, pretty, pretty left-leaning mainstream Democrat. We despise each other's policies on just about everything. The one thing that we have been able to come together on is that we both support Israel's right to exist, and the, and we both agree that Hamas, Hezbollah, and the Houssies have to be, if not completely, hopefully completely wiped out, but if not that, at least constrained. Anyway, I see I'm running out of time, but I'm just, I have to say, I'm pretty disappointed that you wouldn't just, you wouldn't just apologize. Thank you.
So, number 203, thank you.
First of all, I want to thank the trustees for your time and your patience tonight.
Just name for the record, too.
I'm Michael Seltzer. I am a trustee of the Village of Franklin, so we share that in common and nothing else. I'm also a board member of Temple Israel. I'm a volunteer at Yad Ezra. I believe, I can't even imagine what you were thinking, and you could have ended this two and a half hours ago by simply apologizing and stepping down, which would have been the right thing to do. Censure is obviously something that should happen tonight, but you're sitting here and listening to all of this emotion without flinching tells us everything we need to know. And it's truly sad, and it's truly embarrassing, and you should be ashamed of yourself. Jews are forgiving people. When I work at Yad Ezra, we give away hundreds of pounds of food to people in need all across the metropolitan area. I do a similar job in Arizona where I have another home. Jews are giving people, and Jews have been protecting their right to exist since the beginning of the State of Israel in 1948. And Jews go out of their way to make sure that when they retaliate, they let the innocent victims know that they're coming? Hamas did not call anybody or text anybody or drop leaflets anywhere. You could have ended this two hours ago by resigning with dignity. Hamas could have ended all this immediately by releasing hostages. None of us want to hear anymore about a ceasefire or a two-state solution, not with people who simply want you dead, and that's where you are. I have I have zero respect for you as a trustee, as an elected official. I cannot understand how this board can allow you to sit there and to make this kind of a representation and double down on it by sending out reminders and invitations to be here tonight, to join with you, to support you. Shameful, shameful. Do the right thing. Step down right now. No one should have to wait until November. Step down tonight.
Hi, what number do you have with you?
Wait, what number?
194.
194, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees. Good evening, Stephanie. I'm really just...
And your name for the record?
Hind Rajab.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm really appalled about this, about this group bullying that you've been enduring for the last few hours. I have never seen anything like it. It's appalling, it's disgusting, but it's not surprising. They have to defend the genocide that's going on in the name of Israel. You know what's antisemitic? Is committing the worst genocide in history in the name of Jews, hijacking Judaism in the name of antisemitic. Zionism is not Judaism. You need to educate yourselves, okay? Educate yourselves. Go to historians like Ilan Papé, who is Israeli, Norman Finkelstein, who is Israeli, Max Bloomingsal. The list goes on and on and on. You need to educate yourselves. You don't come here and bully a respectable person that stands for humanity and for justice because you're cowards, you're cowards. You know, everyone knows, everyone globally knows that Israel is a terrorist apartheid colonial settler state, okay?
Please, please.
Everyone knows that Netanyahu killed Smail Haney because he did not want to ceasefire. Educate yourselves. Watch Democracy Now!, I invite you to watch Democracy Now! You're in here like an echo chamber, listening to yourselves, clapping for yourselves, bullying Ms. Faqih. You should be ashamed of yourselves. That's who should be ashamed of yourselves. Look at you. You say that she's the one that's pushing all this hate. I have never been so, so contaminated by all this hate in this room. I've never been around it. It's disgusting. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Attacking a respectable person that runs, that stands for justice and humanity, I've never met anyone as brave as you, Ms. Faqih. Good for you, good for you, good for you. Stay strong. May God bless you, may God bless your family. I'm sorry for your loss, and I'm so sorry there's no humanity in this room, but group bullies, they should be ashamed of themselves. But again, they have to keep up the Hezbollah, they have to keep up the propaganda that Israel has pushed. By the way, by the way, they have not only murdered people and massacred people in Gaza and Lebanon and Syria, every, they're just, now they're going to kill the international...
20 seconds.
The international troops, the peacekeeping troops in Lebanon, not just humanitarian workers, not the 166 medical workers in Gaza, not the journalists, anything to keep things quiet. Israel's been exposed for the colonial settler apartheid terror state that it is. There is no two-state solution because Israel stole all of Palestinian land.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Everybody, please.
Again, again, just because somebody has a differing opinion, we have not been booing, and we actually did ask some to remove for booing. Please do not, do not, just because somebody has a different idea, a different statement, everybody has three minutes to say their statement.
So, my name is Tom Shewski, number 204. I currently live in West Bloomfield Township, although I was a Bloomfield Township resident for about 30 years. So, October 7, 2023, I think people too often don't say this, but it was a Holocaust against the Jews that day. It was a genocide against the Jews that day. Anytime babies are decapitated, it's to prevent a group of people from living into the future. It's to destroy the future. That is genocide, for, for no reason. So I think it's important to remember that. My son spoke earlier, he's a University of Michigan student, and unfortunately, what he said is true, is there's been a lot of attacks on the University of Michigan campus as well as other universities across this country against Jews simply because they're Jews. And it's disappointing, to say the least, that more faith leaders, and frankly, it would be wonderful if everybody in this room, everyone in this room, would condemn violence against somebody just based on who they are, based on how they look, based on whether they're wearing a kippah, based because they say they're Jewish or whatnot. But unfortunately, I haven't heard every speaker tonight, but I don't hear that, I should be hearing that from every speaker tonight, is violence against somebody because of what their religion is, is absolutely unacceptable. Honestly, everybody in this room should be applauding to that, but it's really shameful that a minority of the room is applauding. Everybody should be applauding. You should never attack somebody based on their religion or based on what their clothing is. Thank you, thank you. I think we can all, I think we can all agree on that, so let's agree to civil discourse, please. The last thing I want to say is...
Actually, did we start at that time?
Yeah, I guess I get another three minutes. I was so good, you want to give me another three minutes? The last thing I want to, I want to say is, you know, maybe 13 months ago, Jews in this country had some disagreement about internal Israeli politics, domestic politics, the prime minister's proposals for reforming the judiciary, there was a real strong disagreement. And I think the past 13 months have showed how united Jews are, and I'm not sure if this word's been mentioned tonight, but I am proud. I am proud of Jews for sticking together, for showing we are one community, that when one Jew is attacked or injured, we stick together and we protect us all. I am a Jew and I am a proud Jew. Thank you.
So we're looking around, number 205, 210?
What number are you, sir? Number?
193.
Oh, 193, great.
Definitely up.
Yep, thank you. Your name for the record?
Free Palestine. I just want to say, Ms. Faqih, don't, don't change your values, don't change anything you had, you had to say. Your family's getting killed over there, and it's rich for all these fat Americans to sit here and, and actually have some kind of judgment on you, as if, there might be some people here that had some deaths in Israel, maybe some family members, but most of them here, I see a bunch of 17, 18, 19, 20-year-old boys here, why aren't you guys fighting for your country that you guys are so proud of? You guys are so...
Please stop, please stop. Stop engaging, sir.
Did I say something offensive?
Sir, that's the last warning.
So, I'm sorry that you, you had your loss, your losses of your family, and your emotion and scum Zionist or whatever you said, I don't even know exactly. These guys here, these guys here, they are rich, and not rich in money, but they are so rich here talking you down as if you did something wrong. Everybody in this council here got elected the same way, and each of them have their own views, okay? And I don't know if any of you lost anybody in the last, in the last 370 days, a loved one overseas in the Middle East, but if you have not, you have no room to talk, so about 99% of you should not even be in this room anymore. Okay? None of you guys, you guys are just, you guys are deplorable. Deplorable. I, you know, no, no, no. I don't think you're a scum, you're deplorable. Okay? You've been called scum before.
You have to address the board or your comment is done. You're here to talk to the board members?
Well, they were talking to me, so I just answered.
I've already asked them to stop, but you were re-engaging, so please focus on the board.
So, board, I'm asking you guys, there's no need for censure and all that silly stuff, okay? She speaks for her family and for the people that she, her heritage. She should not be brought down because of that. The people here have been talking about Israel, Israel, Israel. They're Zionists. Zionism is an ideology, it's not a religion. You're Jewish, okay. I have no problem with anybody that's Jewish, but I have a problem with Zionists because Zionists are killing people in the Middle East.
20 seconds, sir.
And that's all it is. So stay strong, do not bow down to these people, and what you have to do is stay strong for your family, because you know what? Everyone overseas is watching what's happening now, and they're watching you, and they want you to stay strong for them, for them, because they don't have a voice.
Okay, I think we're back to 205, 200, 200. Thank you, sir. And your name?
My name is Faras. I live off of Lone Pine and Middlebelt. I didn't know too much about what was going on. I heard about this through some messages, and been standing outside, and I don't think I've witnessed so much hatred towards, like, the comments and everything, just being out there the entire time. Little to say, what she said is her right. I don't think I've seen anything more un-American than trying to censor somebody for what they have said. She didn't say anything politically wrong. She goes again, and a lot of people here have even said that I am Jewish and I'm also Zionist. It seems like it's been two different things the entire time. So to have an idea of what it is to be against a political idea, I don't think there's anything wrong in doing so. Now, the hatred that's come from that and the victimization of saying that Zionism is Judaism is something that I just don't understand. It's one of the biggest logical fallacies that I've seen. So I don't understand the correlation, and I don't think anything that's done this entire time.
Please, please, you focus on us and then they won't notice as much. It's the looking back that apparently people can't stop commenting. Stop.
It's been happening the entire night.
So please focus at the board and it won't happen.
Yeah, it's fine. All I'm saying is that when it comes to the freedom of speech, there's nothing more unequivocal in the United States, and I don't understand why this has become some kind of witch hunt. I don't know why this is something that she asked, people are asking for her to apologize, step down, anything, it was within her rights. You as the board, it seems like you guys are politically active and you guys care about your constituents, and if anything, it shows that you guys care about what your duty is towards the people here in the United States of America. So if somebody's here to speak and say what they have to say, then you guys should be defending that unequivocally. There shouldn't be some kind of witch hunt to do so. I have never seen so many times throughout this entire last year where people have not, it's just been this kind of propaganda, whatnot, I've just been seeing it nonstop, but we don't talk about the deaths, we don't talk about the victims, we don't talk about the people's families, we don't talk about the, I couldn't bury, we couldn't bury our grandmother right away because she passed away in Gaza. So there's not enough places to even bury people, but people are so worried about becoming the victim in this whole thing, saying, I just, the rhetoric is just insane. If you saw the post, when I saw the image of the post, it was the bombing of Lebanon, smoke and fire and destruction and death.
20 seconds.
And I see that when somebody posts something like that and she's blaming a political group for the death and destruction of bombing civilians and innocents, there's nothing wrong with that. This country used to stand for what is right. It used to take a stance against things that are not right. I don't see that anymore, not tonight, but just stay true and hopefully, the American public will wake up again.
Okay, so anybody, anybody else who wants to speak, public comment that hasn't, thank you, what number do you have?
208.
208, thank you.
My name is Lace. I live here in Bloomfield Township. I just want to start by saying for people that are here that are so mad about hateful speech, that's actually all I've heard tonight, is hate from everybody in this room. Mean words about a person who has done nothing but help this community, help this state and help this world. And I know for a fact that everyone on this board, sorry, I know for a fact that everyone on this board has loved and respected Stephanie to the fullest, and I know why, because Stephanie is a good person, and all of them up here know that. I have been friends with Stephanie for over 20 years, and I can say, Stephanie has made me a better person, a more caring person, a God-loving person, and most importantly, a God-fearing person. I know some may think her words were wrong, but just like all of you here who are sticking up for your people, Stephanie is doing the same, sticking up for her family who is being affected by what is happening in this senseless war. I know Stephanie respects every race, religion, and creed simply for the fact that she is friends with me, a Catholic, and many, many Jews that I know of. Stephanie spent her whole law life working pro bono for the black community at the 48 District Court. There was no one who was more of a humanitarian than Stephanie Faqih, and I'm proud to say that she has inspired me to be the best person I can be. Also, I just want to tell all of you, I would vote for Donald Trump because he is the only one that will stop this senseless war. Yep, I'm not Muslim and I'm not Jewish, and this is how I feel, and I do, yeah, all of you guys, I would actually be a lot nicer.
Unless you direct the comment up here, please, you are here for the board, not for the community.
Yes, and I just want to say to the board, do you guys not all agree? Did you guys not all love Stephanie? Tell, tell me. Did you guys not all love Stephanie? Through the whole time that she has been on this board, have you guys not all? Can you guys answer that question?
We'll have a chance.
I know, I know for a fact that you guys have all loved and respected Stephanie up until all these bullies behind me have made you guys not. Correct or not correct?
Not a question and answer, period.
Okay. Well, thank you guys so much. I hope we can spread love in this world. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay, anybody else? 209, 215? Oh, hi. Oh, 192. So by the way, you know, we're going backward now.
Yeah, because I wasn't planning on speaking, honestly, but...
Yeah, yeah, but that's, the rule is if we called your number and you haven't, and you don't come up, I'm gonna let you speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Yes, so...
It's up to you.
I have to apologize, I mean, I know you came in later.
Yeah.
So just so everyone knows, we're gonna call the numbers, and if you don't come up and speak at that time, that's the time.
Oh, I didn't know that, I'm so sorry. Is it okay if I, if I go ahead? Okay. My name is Maha, and I live in West Bloomfield Township. Stephanie, thank you. I just wanted to say one thing. I am, I was born and raised in Palestine, in Bethlehem. So when you, I've seen the occupation firsthand. I suffered, I got humiliated on the checkpoints, I mean, I could say, I could say from now until I don't know what, to the end of the time, of the times, like, I could see Jerusalem from my balcony, but I can't go there because I have to apply for a permission from the Israeli government to allow me to go to Jerusalem and pray, for instance. I mean, checkpoint after checkpoint after checkpoint, they divided all the cities. A commute that's 20 minutes away from Bethlehem to Ramallah sometimes takes somebody five, six hours because there are so many checkpoints, and sometimes the soldiers just don't feel like letting the traffic through, so people just have to sit and wait in their cars because they have the M16, obviously, and there's nothing that they can do about it. I mean, traveling, you can't, you know, you have to go through Jordan and go through this humiliation. I mean, they could ask you or do anything for you just because you're Palestinian. Some roads that you can go on and some you just can't because you're Palestinian. So when, so to me, it's so shocking, so shocking, when people here stand up and say they are proud Zionists. They are, do you know what that means? That means that any Jew in this whole world can just instantly have citizenship and go live in Israel versus Palestinians who lived there thousands of years got kicked out in live in Israel versus Palestinians who lived there thousands of years got kicked out in 1948. And they live as refugees and till this day, they can't go back to their own homes that they have the key to the home that other settlers are living in right now. I mean, is that fair? Is that fair? Zionists is like you come and take my land and you think that it's okay for someone who, who's just because they're Jewish. They can come to Palestine and take our land and live in it. It's okay. And they're doing that because they have the power to do so. And no one is stopping them. Settlements are getting bigger and bigger and bigger on stolen land. It's really sad. It's really sad. So from Palestinian perspective, I challenge everyone of you to go and meet a Palestinian.
Ma'am, please speak to the, oh, thank you. So to review.
I'm getting the text if the audio is off, just so you know.
Outside? Thank you.
I'm getting texts from outside the community.
So is there anybody else with numbers to speak?
What number do you have?
212.
Excellent.
Moving on. I wish I could say it's a good evening. It's not. It's a sad evening. My name is David Blum. I'm from Birmingham. Stephanie is right. Lebanon is being destroyed right now. She has family there. She's probably hurting a lot about it. And she's worried for her family and her family's probably suffering too. On October 8th, the day after the atrocities committed by Hamas, a group in Lebanon called Hezbollah started shooting rockets and missiles into Israel. Until Israel finally responded, about 8,000 rockets, projectiles, drones have gone into Israel and there are some 60,000 to 80,000 Israeli citizens that could not live in their homes because of that and were displaced and are refugees in other parts of Israel. Israel did not and does not occupy Lebanon before that happened. There was a war in 2006 between Israel and Lebanon. The result of that war was some UN resolutions where the Lebanese and Hezbollah agreed to disarm and move north behind the Litani River. That didn't happen. The UN peacekeepers that are there to keep the peace have spent 20 years there watching people, Hamas, dig tunnels, put arms in them and prepare for an invasion of Israel. Lebanon unfortunately does not have control over much of Lebanon. And so we have a horrible war that shouldn't be happening, but it is happening. And Israel is defending itself, just like the United States would if missiles were coming here from Mexico or Canada or from maybe a reservation from Native Americans who had their land stolen from them. We live in a really rough world and we have to decide what kind of rules that our civilization is going to live by or we will not survive. And I feel for every Palestinian person, every person in Lebanon that is killed, especially being killed unnecessarily. And I would like to see some humanity from people making statements that are demonizing Jews that are defending themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. That was number 212. Anybody, 213, 220? Just going through the numbers one time. What number do you have?
198.
Yes.
My name's Hindra Jav. Sorry for your family and free Palestine.
So we're going in one direction with our numbers. Just so you know, we're calling, everybody's got a card, you got a number on it, I'll call that number. If you want to speak, you come up. If you don't want to speak, that's your chance. And so we're now up at number 213. Okay. I'm kidding, that's about the top of the numbers that have been issued today.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
So closest public comment. Thank you, everybody.
With no more people here, we'll go ahead and close that. Next, unless it's 213 or higher, sir, what number is yours? Is it 213 or higher? If it's 213 or higher, otherwise, I'm so sorry, but public comment is closed. He has already missed his turn. So we are now closed for public comment and we will go ahead with the next agenda item.
Well, do we have any discussion?
Would there like to be a discussion? Or we don't normally talk about public comment, but is there?
I have a motion to make. So I'll read, I'll read the motion and we can discuss it. All right?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, let me put my glasses on. Whereas Stephanie Faqeeh has been a Bloomfield Township trustee since November 20th, 2020, and her term expires on November 20th, 2024. And whereas on Friday, October 4th, 2024, trustee Stephanie Faqeeh posted on the internet that Israeli Zionists are the scum of the earth and the only people on par are American Zionists. And said post was publicly available online. And whereas trustee Faqeeh knew or should have known that making such a statement on a public forum would cause division and pain in the Bloomfield Township and surrounding community. And whereas the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees finds the content of that post reprehensible, anti-Semitic and inconsistent with their pledge to uphold the principles of township governance that all members of this board most recently executed on December 11th, 2023, which are attached to this motion and posted in the hallway. Wherein all trustees agree to treat, to quote, "treat all persons with dignity, respect and impartiality without prejudice or discrimination." And whereas trustee Faqeeh made additional videos and posts online that called for supporters to show up on the October 14th board meeting in an attempt to disrupt and delay the board's official proceedings and caused the township to expend resources in providing a law enforcement personnel to keep residents and the board safe. And whereas the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees finds that trustee Faqeeh's recent communications further violate our principles because they are inconsistent with her pledge to bring, quote, "credit, honor and dignity to our public offices." Now therefore be it resolved that a Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Bloomfield does hereby censure trustee Stephanie Faqeeh and calls on her to take substantial steps to heal the wounds in the community caused by her actions.
I'll support that.
Do we have discussion?
Well, I guess I would like to make, I would like to make a quick comment with regard to that. And a lot of people, I mean, a lot of people alluded to it and from my point, it's true. I've appreciated working with Stephanie. I think Stephanie's done a lot of good work on this board. I was surprised by the post. I don't think Stephanie's anti-Semitic, but I think the post is anti-Semitic. And I think the post and conduct afterwards does violate the township Board of Trustees principles that we all signed. And I make the motion because I think it's our obligation to, to call the foul when we see it and point it out. And so that's why I've been happy to make the motion at this difficult time. So I, I say happy to make the motion, I really don't, it's not a good motion that I want to make. I'm not happy to make the motion, but because it is a difficult time. But this is, in my opinion, a violation of the principles that we all sign and therefore I offer this motion to censure Stephanie for her posts.
And in my, in my support, you know, I just want to add that really, this is bringing you back to where we started from, which is the governance of Bloomfield Township and not all the other discussions that are totally irrelevant to what we're doing here as a board and as a violation of the, as, as was just stated by Martin, the Charter Principles of Township Governance, which we all signed. So it's nothing to do with all of these unfortunate things that are happening outside of Bloomfield Township. This has to do with the governance of Bloomfield Township and the impact on all of our residents, not just one set of residents. Because if you, as I stated before, if you go after one ethnic group, one religion, you go after all of them and it's not acceptable.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, you want to go? Okay. So my thoughts are, you know, this is not to be taken lightly. And we've spent three hours now, you know, listening to a lot of very emotional testimony and public comment. And we've solved nothing. And this is, this is, you know, it totally outside of what we're supposed to be doing as, as a board. And the last thing I'll say is that a year ago, after October 7th, I was approached by other members of this board to prepare a resolution in solidarity, in condolence to Israel over what happened in the terrorist attacks. And when we discussed it as a board, it was Stephanie who rightly pointed out that we're a local government and we should, you know, attend to local government issues and not get stuck in the, you know, the muck and mire of international geopolitics. And so we didn't go ahead with any kind of resolution at that time, even though there was interest from members of this board because it was not within our purview as a local government. And unfortunately, we're here tonight dealing with stuff that's outside of our purview as a local government. And it was, you know, trustee Faqeeh who brought us here. So I'm supportive of this motion.
So I'm sorry it's come to this. Somebody had mentioned, do I respect Stephanie Faqeeh? I'm the newest one on the board and many people on the board here owe me with open arms, including Stephanie. She helped get me up to speed and was a steady hand as I adjusted to my role. I believe she has served the residents of Bloomfield Township respectfully for her 11 years, sorry, three years, 11 months, excuse me. But I also believe that we are held to a higher standard and we have principles that we have to follow. And while I still respect Stephanie and I believe she can be a good leader and she tries to be a good leader, that censure is a way to show that this type of language or this type of hurt in our community cannot continue. So it does not mean I take it lightly and I do respect Stephanie. And I hope we can learn and grow and all members of our community can learn to love one another and respect one another and trust one another and use this as a way for us to bridge our differences here and continue to grow. Thank you.
So this is particularly hard for me because Stephanie and I came on the board together. We were, we ran as candidates together. We became good friends together. We confided in each other. We would, you know, look to each other to discuss things as the newbies. We didn't, you know, want to, if we had a question, we'd bounce it off each other. We went to social events together. I considered her and I still do, she's a great person. I learned from her and we had a great relationship. And I was just so saddened to see, you know, I understand that awful things are happening around the world, but we can't control it here and we're entitled to our hurts and our feelings and our opinions. But unfortunately, not just the post, but that she continued and if she had, you know, had, had some pullback or, but it just escalated out of control. It disrupted our community. I personally was fearful to come here tonight. I just felt like the hostility in our whole country came right into here to our boardroom. And so for that reason, I will support the censure because it sends a message that we just, our words carry much more value when we sit here. This is a privilege to sit here. And personally, I would feel horrible if I said something inappropriate that disrupted anyone in this community, no matter race, religion, anything else. So it, this is a very difficult night for us.
I echo those remarks in that, yes, I do think that Stephanie has done a lot of great things. And even in our discussion today, what we had earlier, all I was looking for, because I, I did feel that de-escalation was coming, all I was looking for was what I saw from others. There were questions earlier of has anybody else lost anybody? And yes, there are people on this board that lost people on October 7th. There are people that knew hostages, but nobody knew that because they knew that these seven voices carry weight with words. So Stephanie was right. When we agreed last year, this is not our place. This is Bloomfield Township. We represent everybody. There are 45,000 voices and there are people on both sides that are hurting, including members of the board. So I agreed with her then and I also agree with that sentiment now, that this had no place. And to be honest, the entire workings of Bloomfield Township has shut down in my aspect. Now, you still had people protecting you, you still had all your services, but every single meeting I was supposed to be in last week got canceled to discuss prepping for this meeting because of calls to action from one of our trustees. So to be honest, I do respect trustee Faqeeh and she'll tell you, I thought she was hacked. I honest to God, never thought that my friend would say something knowing she not only attacked a community, but attacked members of her own board. So I honest to God reached out to Stephanie and said, I think you've been hacked. I absolutely could not have expected it. That is not what I, what I ever saw coming from Stephanie Faqeeh, who's done so many good things. But as it escalated through the week and we literally could not continue business at my level, that's a lot to say. Every, I mean, my day is so scheduled. Every single meeting had to be canceled. Every evening was focused on this meeting. All weekends were focused on this meeting. Never in eight years have we had to plan for having no bags, no purses, nothing and metal detectors. Never. And that was because of calls to action from one of our board members that escalated outside our borders of Bloomfield Township. You heard a lot of angry voices tonight and I absolutely agree with it, but the loudest, angriest voices weren't even residents. So again, we were brought the Middle East to our borders tonight and it was by a member. All I needed was to hear, I take it back. I don't take back my thoughts. I take back the way it's done. I take back something. I wanted the same humanity that those that lost lives a year ago gave to us and gave to her. That's all I needed today to not support this. And it could have happened earlier, it could have happened three hours later. All I needed was to hear, I made a mistake and I don't feel that my community and my board members are scum. I didn't hear that, so I now support this.
Stephanie?
The only comment that I have with regard to the censure is when this board says that in an effort to disrupt and delay the board's official proceedings, calling for people to show up. So I will just say that inviting members of the public, and it's not clear who is a resident and who's not, because not everybody gave their address, but inviting members of the public to come and comment, regardless of which side they support, is not encouraging disruption or stopping the work of Bloomfield Township. That is the work of Bloomfield Township to hear public comment from the people that want to come and speak at the podium.
All right. Unless there's anything else, I call the roll call vote. Unless there's anything else, I call the roll call vote. I feel this one is a roll call.
I don't have anything else. Okay. Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Faqui?
No.
Mr. Kalinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Shostak?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to one.
Six to one.
Six to one. Math.
Okay. So next, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is to, do you want a bio break?
Yeah. Why don't we take a break?
Do we need a motion to adjourn for a moment? Okay, we're just going to take a short bio break. Our next item on the agenda is approving the board minutes of September 23rd, 2024, unless there's any changes. I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kalinsky, support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That does pass. Next, we have the board working session of the strategic plan by Barry Dunn. And actually, today, we have in person, Jen Ferguson has flown in for this. And then on Zoom, we also have Michelle Kennedy. I'm going to turn it over to Jen.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Walsh. Good evening, Bloomfield Township and Board of Trustees. Thank you for having us here tonight. We're going to present the Bloomfield Township initial draft of your first-ever strategic plan. I believe you have the word document in your board packet to follow along. I'm going to provide a brief overview and then go through the elements of your initial draft of the strategic plan. Thank you. So Barry Dunn is a national management and IT consulting firm, and we've partnered with the township in order to develop your first-ever strategic plan. We work with clients across the United States, and our local government practice group, Enterprise Organizational Development Practice, specializes in strategic planning, organizational development, organizational assessment, and performance measure and management services. Our Barry Dunn team on your project is Seth Hedstrom, our principal, Michelle Kennedy, whom some of you have met, and she is with us virtually tonight, Maddie Powers, and Keith Linton, who is from Michigan, and myself. I am Jen Ferguson. I am a senior consultant with Barry Dunn. Just a little background on the overall project timeline. We started in April of this year with our project management phase. We shifted then into the stakeholder engagement phase in June and July. And then in August is where we started Phase Three, and that's the development of the actual plan. Typically, a strategic plan, some communities take about six months, some can take 12. So we are in and looking like we're going to land on about an eight-month process for developing a strategic plan. So just a little background real briefly about what a strategic plan is. It's the what. It's what the township wants to prioritize and focus on. This is the direction that you'll set in a five-year period. It's a living document. It's meant to be dynamic. It's meant to be guiding your decisions connected with your budget. And it's a tool for being transparent to the community about what your priorities are.
All three of you are in the board.
How you, how you reach your goals is the implementation plan, and that comes afterwards. That's the very detailed action plan, and that comes after the strategic plan. Now, you'll see in the draft plan, there are some outcomes and some initial performance measures that were established by your leadership team, but that is really, the implementation planning will be the next set of exercises that we'll go through with you and your township leadership team. So just a little overview about how a plan is developed and who's involved, what are the roles? So the Bloomfield Township community focuses on identifying those priorities, and the township community assists in developing your vision. Then, the township board develops a mission, vision, values, and strategic priorities and those goals. And then the township leadership team takes those strategic goals and develops the objectives, outcomes, performance measures, and then, of course, the implementation plan. Elements of a strategic plan include a vision, mission, values, and strategic priorities. And the mission is what you do now. The vision is where you want to go. That's that future focus. Values are essentially how the board of trustee comes to work every day. It's a day-to-day, how you deliver services to the community. It's what staff relies on in how they deliver services to the community, and those strategic priorities are where you're going to focus. That's the vision. This is another depiction about how the strategic plan fits together. We use a house graphic to show that your vision statement is that high level, your mission statement is how you, what services you provide, how you do the work. And then, of course, those strategic priorities that you develop to focus on. The goal statement identifies the, or essentially is the definition of what that priority means. Outcomes and objectives are set, and it is all underlying, and it is the foundation that is on your values that you establish. So what are the sources that inform a strategic plan? Well, it's a lot of input. It's a lot of perspectives. And so it's interviews with the community. It was a community forum earlier this year. It was interviews with community members, staff members, board members. It was a social pinpoint site where folks who didn't want to come to a meeting or weren't able to attend were able to provide their ideas, their perspectives on that virtual The township conducted a statistically valid survey. That is another way where you gathered feedback from the community in order to help you set your priorities. And then, of course, a strategic plan includes the environmental scan based on demographic data and economic data, and as well as township existing plans, such as your budget, and other plans that you develop over time. All right. So I would like to present to you now, we're going to start with the draft mission statement. And I wanted to thank you all. The last time that we saw you was when we worked on plan development and with the board, as well as the next day, we worked with the township leadership team. And they did a lot of great work to come up with draft statements as part of the initial strategic plan. So is there any questions? Otherwise, I will move forward and present the draft plan to you.
All right. Not a quiet group. It's been a long night.
It has. It has. So the proposed draft statement, mission statement, and remember, this is what you do day in and day out. Bloomfield Township delivers best-in-class services, fostering a premier community where all can thrive while protecting our natural resources in a fiscally responsible manner. That would be describing what it is that you do. The vision statement, and this is the future, this is the focus. Bloomfield Township is a safe, inviting, and vibrant community where people feel a sense of connection and residence. Quality of life is enhanced with outdoor recreation opportunities, well-maintained infrastructure and natural spaces, leading-edge technology, and an exemplary township workforce. The values that were identified, and again, this is that foundation for how you will do your work, how staff will come to work. Integrity. We uphold honesty and transparency in all of our interactions by fostering trust and respect within our organization and throughout the community. Value of stewardship. We are committed to careful management of public funds and resources to ensure long-term financial viability. The value of excellence. We strive for best-in-class service and continuous improvement through visionary leadership that places the needs of the community first. Innovation. We embrace forward-thinking aspirational solutions and positive change to continually enhance, now I can't read the bottom because of the screen.
Hold on.
Thank you so much. To continually enhance our services and community impact. And finally, collaboration. We work together with approachability and friendliness to build strong partnerships and effectively address community needs. Those are the five proposed values. All right. Now, those strategic priorities and goals. The strategic priorities are those focus areas. There's typically four to six, and what's proposed here are five priorities. And so I wanted to go through those briefly. The goal statement essentially defines what that priority means. So first priority is a vibrant quality of life. And the goal is to support recreational and cultural activities for all ages and abilities while encouraging a thriving retail and hospitality presence. The second priority is a welcoming community. The goal in that priority is to build and enhance avenues of communication among residents, the township, businesses, and other stakeholders in support of a safe, vibrant, and welcoming The third priority is to preserve community character. And that means that you will endeavor to preserve the township's history and natural resources to maintain our unique community character and neighborhood design elements for current and future residents. The fourth priority, the goal is to continue to invest in reliable and modern infrastructure and systems that meet the township's expected levels of service while evolving with the changing needs and potential growth of the community. And last but not least, your priority for best-in-class government. And that goal is to deliver best-in-class government services to the community by developing and retaining an exemplary workforce while continuing to be an innovative leader in Are there any questions about the priorities that have been identified, the top five? Okay. Now I'm going to talk about the objectives for each of those priorities. And the objectives are high-level action items. These are the things that your leadership team identified as ways that the priority and the goal would be achieved. And so I want to run through-
Can I just interject? The leadership team, just so the trustees know, were every department head, and then for our three departments, so that we were not in there, so that they could speak freely, the deputies were in there. So it was 10 department heads and two deputies.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just because I don't know that that was included before when we talked about that.
Thank you. Thank you. The leadership team worked really hard, rolled up their sleeves and really put a significant amount of effort into developing what these objectives would be in order to achieve your goals. So things that they worked through and developed for the vibrant quality of life included exploring opportunities that will enhance and promote community and cultural events by partnering with other cities, villages, townships, and community organizations to develop or expand programming to the community. Build relationships with local restaurants and businesses, business community to foster business startup retention and expansion that creates a bustling restaurant scene. Develop a recreational strategy that is fiscally sustainable to offer green space settings, park amenities, outdoor activities, performance space, and recreational programs for all ages. Develop an action plan to create new parks and green spaces. And finally, the last objective was to create a quality-of-life community board to collaborate and support community events. The outcomes are what they were looking to achieve. The plan identifies are that board of trustee approval of an actual plan to develop new parks and recreational opportunities. The township becomes more bike-friendly, and community events are created and supported by the township in partnership with other organizations. The objectives for a welcoming community included recreating an ambassador program to welcome new residents and introduce them to township services, amenities, and attractions. Explore and develop partnerships to expand and promote community events that appeal to a broad range of interests. Produce a calendar of events to be distributed throughout the township so residents are aware of activities and opportunities for enjoying life in their community. Develop a brand identity for Bloomfield Township that highlights its unique characteristics and differentiates the community from surrounding towns and cities. And finally, to promote the brand identity with specific messaging focused on safety, diversity, and the township's natural beauty through all available channels. The outcomes that were identified for a welcoming community included that residents feel welcomed and knowledgeable about township services, amenities, and businesses, and the township has a distinct and recognizable identity. All right. The objectives identified for preserving the community's character included creating a multimedia campaign to inform township residents about code enforcement and building code resources to ensure the safety of residents. Encourage use of safety paths by informing the community through multifaceted channels to ensure a sense of safe and connected neighborhoods. Revisiting the township's tree preservation and protection policies and amend current zoning to further define levels of required preservation and enforcement so that green spaces and tranquil settings are maintained. Collaborating with HOAs to inform residents about township residential lot regulations to protect and maintain wetland areas. Engage with Preservation Bloomfield, Bloomfield Historical Society, and Bloomfield Hills School District to promote their educational opportunities regarding the township's rich history. And finally, the objective to update the township's master plan to prioritize the preservation of community character and neighborhood designs. The outcomes identified for preserving community character included trees and green spaces that provide a tranquil setting are preserved, large lots and density requirements are protected, and the township master plan is updated by the end of 2027, December of 2027. Objectives for the reliable infrastructure included three of, and that were to invest in technology to analyze, improve, and provide resilient infrastructure that meets community service-level needs. Continue the execution of the township's capital improvement plan through proactive and solid fiscal planning, which includes options for clean technologies if possible. And continue to advocate for more improvements in the utility providers, such as electric, internet, and cellular communication infrastructure. The outcomes identified for this priority included that the township's public safety facilities would be renovated or updated. The township's capital improvement program is funded and implemented in the five-year asset management plan, and infrastructure solutions and needs are met through partnership And objectives for the last priority, best-in-government, included establishing an employee retention plan that includes competitive total compensation, professional development, and training plans focused on leadership, emotional intelligence, and employee wellness to maintain a positive and thriving workforce culture. Establishing an employee recruitment plan that streamlines the hiring process, develops a talent pipeline to attract top talent. Create community outreach programs and partnerships with community stakeholders to develop a talent pipeline to attract top talent and become a sought-after employer of choice. Continue your strong and efficient financial management practices that prioritize the use of all resources to maintain high levels of service to the community. And continue involvement with community stakeholders, community outreach programs, and professional organizations to continue to learn and develop resources and best-practice policies. The outcomes identified under this priority included that the township would maintain its regional leader status in public service delivery. Partnerships are developed with other service providers, and the community- Partnerships are developed with other service providers, and the community participates and is informed, and a human resources and performance management program is established. So, now, time for some discussion.
So, basically, everything the community said, what we said. The department heads then had the hardest job. All of you had to figure out how we were going to get there. So, this was kind of, there was a lot of hours put in by the department heads, the deputies, and also the committee of five. When you look at the mission statement that was created, is that something, I don't know if you want to go back to that, is that something that speaks to you? Is it something that you feel also covers the mission based on what they came up with?
I think it captures what we talked about last time and all the, yeah, the mission statement, I think, is realistic and captures what we talked about.
Let's go back to that.
Oh, she's got it, okay.
Okay. Yeah, like, when you look at that, does that capture what you were all thinking?
I think some of the buzzwords that we were trying to use and try to, again, everybody would put their words together. This kind of seems to be a blend of what each person was trying to do.
Okay.
The one I more want to highlight is the vision statement seemed wordy, and I want to kind of go through that.
Before going, can I say something about mission before the vision?
Please.
In the packet, there's three options, or four options. That's one of them.
Those were the four that the groups were all working on, and then the department heads picked the best ones and ran with it and created, they kind of put them all in.
That one of the group, of the options that were discussed.
Their favorite was this one, and what they did was they kind of took some and tweaked them and kind of put them all in one, and that's what they came to general.
That's correct. The options are in the Word document. I also have them in an appendix in this presentation slide deck because if you wanted to refer back, because there were suggestions by the board. There were options, if you will, that we put forward so that one might resonate, you know, more so. And this is the one that the project team and the leadership team, you know, liked the wording. And again, like supervisor said, we tweaked it. Everyone worked really hard with trying to, you know, frame it appropriately.
Yeah, so basically, if you had all said that wasn't at all what we were thinking, instead of restarting, we had the three backups, what everybody was thinking.
That's still a workable draft, though.
What's that?
Still a workable draft.
Yeah, like, if we decide today we want to change wording, or like you're saying, make it shorter, that's what we're here to do. They kind of narrowed down from all of the choices we gave to this, and then we kind of look at and say, is it spot-on, or are there some wordings that we want changed?
We're taking your feedback tonight, and then we will incorporate that, and then bring that forward in a proposed final strategic plan.
It looks good.
Oh, I would just say, definitely, you hit all the points. The only part that I'm kind of hesitating on is where we're saying we all can thrive while protecting our natural resources. That, to me, seems, you know, because we're talking about where we, it kind of seems like two different concepts. And so, we're talking about where we can thrive and then tying it to the natural resources. So, I'm not sure how to better-
I think there should be a comma after thrive to make it too separate.
Right.
Those thoughts aren't intention, as you're saying. I don't think thriving community and protecting our natural resources are intention.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I agree, too, that it needs something.
It's almost like remove the comma after community and move it to after thrive.
There isn't one after.
Best-in-class services.
Yeah, well, foot one after thrive.
There should be one after community.
Just add an extra.
Or do you, yeah.
Oh, there isn't, there isn't the packet. No.
I think this was where they kind of came with the final. I'm guessing the packet was the draft that wasn't the final that Michelle, after they all kind of met and decided the final one. It sounds like we got the other one instead.
Well, you have the draft, the latest version of the draft, the Word document. This, we can, if we plug that into the draft, then we will, we can add the proper commas, the proper grammar. And so, that makes perfect sense, is that we would add in that comma after thrive.
Is there anything besides the grammar that you guys want to look at? Like, is there?
Well, the grammar is key there because I think that those are where we all thrive and protect our natural resources. Whereas well is a word that puts the two, like, well, we all thrive, but we're still going to protect natural resources.
Maybe switch it to and, yeah. That's a good idea.
Well, again, in the packet, there's a comma after community, and I'm suggesting that it should be moved to after thrive. So, it'd be fostering a premier community where all can thrive, comma, while protecting our natural resources, comma, in a fiscally responsible manner.
What about moving up in a fiscally responsible manner? Fostering a premier community in a fiscally responsible manner where all can thrive, comma, while protecting our natural resources.
See, I like that. I think you should move fiscally responsible manner to after best-in-class services.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I think definitely moving it up because it's sort of kind of going back and forth between, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds more like it seemed.
Because when we do that, we're explaining that we want best-in-class services, but we have to make sure we pay for it in the appropriate way.
Right.
And we're not going to settle for that, right? So, it goes in the order of importance.
Instead of coming after, after natural resources in a fiscally responsive manner, it seems like in the wrong place for that.
You got that? So, it's basically Bloomfield Township delivers best-in-class services in a fiscally responsible manner, fostering a peer community where all can thrive, comma, while protecting our natural resources. Does that sound?
Yeah, I think, I think we got it.
I think that's better.
Yeah, I think we got it.
Okay, we will make that change.
But I also, one last thing, because I like, option three, actually, when I read the four options, I liked option three. And I'm not, I have no idea how to describe this, but option two seemed quite technocratic, and option three is a little more-
So, read it to us.
Mission-y.
It's not in the packet.
It's not in what we have. You have it. We don't have it in our packet.
That's what I'm saying. There's two different, because I think the old one was originally given. Sue gave a revised one after our last meeting, and it appears that the old one's in there. So, what you have is a different version.
Oh. The published one's the new one. Oh, I have the, okay.
Yeah, so you have one before they met.
You're taking us backwards, Martin.
Yeah, you're looking at one that was before a couple meetings.
Well, we have this, like, must've, I don't know, Wednesday.
Right, we have, what, two meetings in, so, yeah, Tuesday and Thursday.
Can you read it to us, Martin?
Option three was, the mission of Bloomfield Township is to support a premier residential community providing exceptional services to all who live, work, and visit here, which, to me, seems more mission-y. This seems more like technocratic-y.
So, do you want to add to all who work, live, and visit here at the end of resource? Like, because the only thing technically missing from that was to all who live, work, and visit here.
This one's a little more simplistic.
I see the delivering best-in-class services kind of as a goal more than a mission.
Well, our department heads would actually, with their raised eyebrows, say, you're already getting that, and that's why they felt vision is what we don't offer and where we want to be. The department heads, I think, you can look at Patty's face, and she's going to tell you she's already given you best-in-class.
I understand. I'm not saying it isn't.
Vision is what we do, yeah.
It's not by, putting in there as a goal, it's that we aren't doing it.
No, this isn't a goal.
It remains a goal by stating it in the strategic plan. Okay, cool. I don't have anything else to say.
Do you want to add, though, the work, live, and play kind of thingy, or whatever that was the deal?
I don't know if adding helps for sure.
I think it becomes too long.
It's going to be too long if we add.
Because this is what, if you give your mission statement, you should have your employees say, this is what we value. I tell my employees when they come here, this is what we value, and this is what I expect out of you. If it becomes too wordy or gets too long, whatever that mission is, then they're not able to recite it, or not able to believe it. And as a board, we have to believe it to expect our employees and our residents to believe it.
Right.
Are you okay with it, the way it was modified?
It's not final yet. We can still-
Right, but they wanted to kind of like run with what we say today to finalize it. Does that make sense? Like, so if it's, if it's something hanging up, if we could-
And the one you picked, I'm pretty sure, is what I said out loud during our last thing. I think that was the one, like, I kind of like off-the-cuff said, which I would love to adopt, but I think that they worked from here, so.
Let's move on, let's move on.
I think this is good, and your-
I'm done.
-valed suggestion with the moving it and with the-
Yeah, those are improvements.
Comma captures it all.
Yeah.
It really does. Department heads liked it, it's good. So, vision, please.
All right. The draft vision statement.
So.
What is your feedback with this statement?
And this is where goals come in, because we don't have a lot of outdoor recreation yet. We need to fix it. So, the vision is where you want to be, whereas mission is what you're already doing.
What is leading-edge technology?
I think that came up with, our technology right now is catching us up to the 1990s, early 2000s. I would like to see us closer to 2025, 2020.
So, is the technology internally at Township Hall? Is what we're talking about?
That's the understanding.
Yeah, like with the cert, yeah.
So, not embracing technology to provide service, it's to enhance technology within for our employees.
Well, and to provide better services, because the more paper-based you are, the slower your process is. Like, not even being able to accept, like, Patty is so paper-based, she does all the scanning, her team does all the scanning, everything, because people can't apply online. So, a lot of things even for scheduling and-
That's a huge thing, because I know we're going through this with our son doing a house with a lot of renovations and permits in Royal Oak, he can do it online. And I was like, what do you mean you do it online?
Like, let them scan it in for you.
And you can apply for that online.
So, even little things like that, we're kind of just-
Are we already moving there? Isn't part of our BSNA implementation going to actually already assist Patty with-
That's doing what we have right now in the cloud. And then, adding more services into, like, another example would be, we have four different pay issues right now, yeah.
For treasury, yeah.
It's like, it's that kind of, and like, ArcGIS, it's been around for a really long time. We still have Civic site, which is no longer, it hasn't been, other than one internal employee, it wasn't rewritten, it wasn't supported by anything for almost 15 years.
Well, I think we're always, I mean, leading-edge technology, we're making major steps now, but you can't ever be stagnant with technology, because it's always changing. So, we always want to be moving forward and leading edge. But don't we already have an exemplary township workforce?
Right.
Why is that in the vision? Maintaining.
Yeah, we should say maintain.
Maintaining.
And then, leading-edge technology may be best-in-class technology?
Didn't we use best, did we use best-in-class somewhere else?
They said we shouldn't repeat it, because we had it in the mission.
Only so many times.
We did say it, though.
It just, it seems like a long statement, though, too. That's the only thing I'm working through.
It's a mishmash.
It's a lot. So, I'm sitting here, like, it feels like we're trying to do all these different things when this is our vision. It'll be, it's hard for any community to be exemplary at one of these things. So, a community that has all of them is sometimes unattainable. And does that set up this board or future boards for something that is not really obtainable? We already have great leading, we are trying to encourage technology, but we're not there yet. We have amazing employees, and we're trying to continue to do that. But again, you can't do it all if you're going to be fiscally responsible.
We can still have a vision and a goal to reach all of those. Sometimes we can attain them, sometimes we can't. We, if we have to make budget decisions, so it might be like we've done before, might have to put it off for another year for whatever it is. But I think that should always be the goal of the township, to be the best at everything, especially Bloomfield Township.
Well, and there's a vision, like you said, it's a, you know, it's our, where we, you know, want to go, want to be, doesn't mean we can always, I mean, we got to live within our budgets, we know that.
Would you take out, do you want to, if we were to, where are we maybe too wordy on? I know some heads even suggested taking out, save for things that are already well-known. Would you think maybe Bloomfield Township is a vibrant community? And I could say that, because I was the one that really wanted to keep safe. So, Patty's probably like, what? But we, like, if you're saying it's just too long, is that what you're thinking? And then, we would maybe, like, Bloomfield Township is a vibrant community, kind of cut out the end of that, safe inviting, or?
I think that helps.
Well, I think you could even actually keep safe and inviting, and you can remove where people feel a sense of connection. So, it can be safe inviting in a vibrant community where residents' quality of life is enhanced with the rest of that.
Yeah, I like it.
That's a good one.
Well, and then it says well-maintained infrastructure in natural settings, leading in technology, and exceptional, like, it just feels like-
Yeah, might need some work.
Yeah, just, I somehow need to condense where we can still have the deliverable, yet it doesn't, you know, have-
It's kind of long.
It feels long.
I liked what Stephanie said to take out.
Which would you take out? Which one do you want to give up on?
Well, it's, we can, but again, well-maintained infrastructure, just say, these are better ways to just word some of these, just, like-
Your suggestion?
I can wordsmith it, not write the second.
Not going to wordsmith it at 11:20 at night.
Yeah, that's what I'm actually, so I actually just have, yeah, that's what I was wondering, if we could come back later on with edits to that.
Yeah, it's too late to do it now.
Okay, we'll do that. All right, let's take a look at the values. There are five values. What are your thoughts on the proposed?
Yeah, I thought that was good.
Pretty good.
That's good.
I was pretty happy with this.
What do you guys think? You guys okay with those? Any changes you suggest?
Martin, do you have anything on this?
Nothing comes to mind right now.
Okay, let's move on to the next one.
That's a great suggestion, though.
Yeah, let's move on to the next one.
Great, okay. Thank you. All right, the strategic priorities. There are, there are five proposed, vibrant quality of life, welcoming community, preserve community character, reliable infrastructure, and best-in-class government. And the goal statements that define what those priorities would focus on.
And that was, we originally had six at the board level, and when the department heads looked at it, two of them were kind of the same thing. So, they put it, like you said, easier to, whoa, easier to attain with less is more kind of thing. So, instead of having a duplicate, it went to the five. Okay.
He does new chairs, Michael.
It's late. All right. Anything stand out to you guys there, or does that seem okay?
It seems kind of what we came up with.
Are these chairs on, listen?
No. It seems similar to what we came up with in our study session.
Right, they basically, yeah.
So, I believe they use a lot of the terminology we were looking for in a lot of the directions. So, this seems to be on par with what the consensus was at the board at that time.
It's late.
Looks good.
Yeah, mine does.
All right.
Yeah, it does.
So, you just need to always have people talk for a few hours.
Well, the board did a lot of good work, you know, in your plan development session. So, the priorities came quite clear when we were with you last time, and then, of course, with the leadership team to refine those. All right, so let's have a discussion about the objectives for quality of life, vibrant quality of life. So, these would be-
Sure what vibrant quality of life is.
Do you want to go back to the definition on the last page that we were just looking at?
Yes, so, the goal for vibrant quality of life was to support recreational and cultural activities for all ages and abilities while encouraging a thriving retail and hospitality presence.
I just think, when I say the word quality of life, I think more about health and, you know, welfare and aging gracefully and aging healthfully. That phrase just doesn't fit with the definition we've given it to me.
That came from the August meetings where we had and we came up with. And then, I think, though, what you guys took is another one was like bustling restaurant scene that by itself wasn't like a solid sixth, so they added that in, because quality of life is social. But that, that came from our meetings where we titled them.
I just don't think the phrase quality of life fits with what we're saying. I don't know.
Because we're trying to incorporate two things, trying to include recreation here, and then, like-
Like a social scene.
Social scene. So, while they're two different missions, what is the word we can utilize? And again, I believe Martin is trying to get at his, he doesn't feel like vibrant quality of life- And again, I believe Martin is trying to get at is, he doesn't feel like vibrant quality of life fits that mission, which he agrees with the mission.
Vibrant or the quality of life?
Phrase quality of life.
Vibrant lifestyle?
I think that, I think that pretty sums it up is, you know, the quality of life in the community, living here, you got recreation, you got culture, you got retail, you got hospitality. Like that's part of your quality of life of living here.
Or is it vibrant lifestyle? Either way.
I just think quality of life is referring to
Lifestyle or quality of life?
Can we basically just say like, can you give us other word, like, can you give us other phrases for that later on?
Does it, do you like
Well, she was just saying vibrant lifestyle, do you think that's more spun on?
Styles, yeah, social.
I could, I could, I could get behind lifestyle.
Yeah.
Vibrant lifestyle.
I mean, I like the quality of life, but it's
It's less wordy. We've probably used quality other places too.
Vibrant lifestyle.
Cuts out two words.
That's fine. It handles, it covers what we want to accomplish.
Okay. If, if that were to shift then, I just wanted to go back to the objectives then, if it was vibrant lifestyles, then in order to achieve that, those, the goal for that priority, these are the objectives. So just take a minute to see if these fit the goal.
Cultural events, restaurants, recreation. And then at the bottom, instead of quality of life community board, it would be like lifestyle board or something like that.
Michelle, I'm just going to chime in here for a moment. The objectives that are drafted there were drafted to meet
Done these changes.
They have to go back to the drawing board on the objectives. If, if you like the goal statement and you feel like the priority description vibrant quality of life isn't quite right, that would be obviously easier to change. What we're looking for regarding the objectives is to see if there's anything missing or that you would want to adjust based on the goal statement. So just want to give some clarity that all of this ties together.
But changing it to lifestyle wouldn't mean we get rid of all those objectives.
No. I felt like what she was trying to say was it's easy to change the name as long as we're happy with the objectives. Or the intent of the objectives.
Right.
Yeah, my objection was that the title just didn't fit what we were talking about to me. I just Googled it and like what's quality of life at the degree of which an individual is healthy, comfortable, and able to participate in or enjoy life events. It's more like something you'd see in a healthcare or a retirement community.
I think that definition is specific to a healthcare scenario.
Well, that's, I just think that phrase is something we would see in that place more than
So if we did, if we changed it to lifestyle, would these objectives?
I think so.
How is a difficult one for
Can we, is there a way to get her, hold on, Michelle, because we can't really hear you, we're going to change your audio.
Try it now.
Hold on one sec. Try now.
Michelle, go.
Nope, hold on.
Go ahead. Try now.
Worse.
Michelle.
Nope, now we don't hear it at all. Holding, holding.
Go ahead now. Michelle.
Want to try?
Can you hear us?
Michelle, can you try and talk again?
How about now?
A little bit louder.
It's about the same. Maybe put the microphone down there.
Try it out.
How about now?
Yeah.
Okay. So make, to make a distinction here, you know, we work with all kinds of municipalities. We work with county governments, we work with cities, we work with towns, villages, townships. When, when you're talking about quality of life at the county level, that has a very strong health emphasis, health and wellbeing emphasis. And that's usually the direction that it is for a county strategic plan. Because county governments usually have the mandate of, you know, public health, right? Cities and townships generally don't. Sometimes they develop programs that are related to health. But that's more unusual. It's usually tied more to vibrant quality of life for cities and towns is usually more tied to recreational opportunities, cultural opportunities, amenities in the community, those types of things. So the, the term quality of life is a bit different for a town or a city than it is for a county.
Does that help?
Not really, like just, you know
The other things in, that are usually included in quality of life is just opportunities for people to connect, right? Amenities, events, places to, places to recreate, things to do, ways to feel part of the community. That's really what we talk about when we talk about quality of life in a city or a town.
But we wouldn't lose anything by changing it to vibrant lifestyle, right? Like if we all agree these are great objectives, we would still be able to change it to vibrant lifestyle.
Absolutely. But vibrant lifestyle actually might be a little bit closer description to what is actually there.
Yeah.
Okay, let's just go with that.
Okay. 11:30 at night, I came up with one.
Nice job, Beth.
It's been a long night. This is like, I thought we were going to do, this is going to be quick. And it's kind of like, I think, you know, we're not at our best unfortunately.
Unfortunately, you can't plan for what happens.
All right. The, the outcomes that were identified then, I think still meet the intent of a change to that vibrant lifestyle.
Can you go back one please? Those objectives and outcomes. So the outcomes one, the only thing I wanted to see or something was, is there anything like that holds us accountable to get to either bringing either a millage or a funding mechanism? So I know we talked about developing a strategy, but we can sit here and develop a strategy and not put it forward to our residents in a timely manner. So it's hard for us to partner on a park or these things. We can develop a strategy. If we don't have something in place to either fund it or other boards to fund it, we won't be able to ever get it. But we don't develop a strategy. Finding a way to hold us to a standard. That is something I kind of was thinking about.
So and they had to level set my expectations because I'm like, great, we're having tons of parks in five years. But there's, what you just included is all part of a strategy. That until we know how it's funded, how we're doing it, that was all part of that strategy. Is it funded through millage? Is it funded through some of the people who've stepped forward? Because they now know we're even talking about parks, there's some philanthropists, like how will we do it? Like endowments?
Okay, I just want to make sure
But that'll all be part of that.
That holds us and future boards so that we can get there.
Yeah, it doesn't mean there has to be a millage. It just means this is something that we want to accomplish. And then we can work on trying to find funding mechanisms later.
Okay.
That's right. Another just general comment here. In developing a strategic plan, it doesn't include a mandate that you're going to fund everything that's in here, right? You have to do that through the budget process. The hope would be that you will fund what you say you want to do. But there's a recognition that anything that requires an investment that's part of the strategic plan would be addressed through your budget development and budget adoption process.
Like with the two parks in our area, the nature center and Bowers Farm, that was families that endowed that property. So there was actually no cost to purchase it, they just have to maintain. So there has, now that it's out there that we're looking, there have been people that have reached out with concepts of endowments or concepts of funding mechanisms. We just need to put in the plan so they're willing to do it.
Okay.
I would only, I guess my only thought on that is parks has one kind of meaning through and a phrase I like better is to develop outdoor spaces for more recreational opportunities. Because I think that's what we're thinking about. Parks are part of that, but it could be
Gathering space.
Gathering spaces, yep. It could be collaborating with the nature center to, you know, to make it more welcoming to our community. Usable, it could be collaborate on how we work with property around the schools. Yes, if we find opportunities to buy land, we could do that, but there might be other opportunities. So I just, I would, my suggestion is we broaden that to not just say parks, but to say, to plan to develop outdoor spaces for more recreational opportunities.
And why don't you put including
It includes parks.
Yeah, because it's all encompassing if you say it that way.
Yeah, it's a suggestion. I'm running out of them though. That might be my last one.
But it's a good one. You each had a great one so far.
Yes.
All right, we'll capture that. All right, the objective for welcoming community. Your thoughts on
I do love the ambassador program coming back. My mom needs to be part of the welcome. Yeah, my neighbors are part of it. Like it was kind of fun to go meet the neighbors, show them around, do that.
It creates a sense of community when somebody's new in the area and they may not have people that they, again, it's a community they aspire to be in. Sometimes they don't know people when they get here. So finding ways to build bridges, not fences.
Yeah, I like, we used to do that in our own subdivision just with, within us. You know, go and take them the subdivision lists in the map because we're a small group, so we have the information. It's like, so now you know, you know, if this person down here has an issue, you know how to reach them, you know who they are, you know. It's, it's very welcoming when somebody knocks on your door. They used to call us the
Neil's like, not his door. He said, we bring in muffins.
They used to call us the sunshine ladies that would, when we would go, I'd take my husband with me sometimes, but you know, he didn't mind. But no, but people, that's how I made some of the good friends and relationships in my neighborhood was knocking on that door. That nobody knew those people yet, mostly just to welcome them and get their name on the list so we could be inclusive. And yet it would create bonds forever with some of those people that, you know, I was the one that happened to knock on their door.
Yeah.
It's nice, it's a nice touch for the community to welcome people who've moved in, absolutely.
I like finally doing like a brand identity. Because when people say describe Bloomfield Township, we know what it is, but how do you say it? So I like that we have a brand identity.
And then including the calendar as well, just to get more events. And it forces us to put more in there, right? To create more activities, create more outreach. Because then we'll see if there's not one in a month. So we can work with our employees and work with our groups to get those. So it's great.
Okay. And then these would be the outcomes. These would be what you would be achieving. Thoughts on that?
No, it works.
Sounds great.
Let's move on to the preserving community character priority. Do these objectives move you towards your goal achievement?
It seems like we're, we're trying to show all the rules to our residents versus trying to tell them that we're trying to embrace the community feel. So I'm going to, I'm going to, well, because I, I look at this and I'm like, my welcome pack Well, because it feels like my welcome pack is going to tell me not to do all these things in my community. So I welcome you, but don't you dare do this or this or this. Don't you dare put your stamp on the community. Versus like, hey, like you came to our community, you could be part of this amazing thing we're doing. But don't you dare cut that tree over there, right? Like versus like, hey, this is what makes our community so great. This is what we're embracing. This is what people are, this is why we moved here. So it feels like a lot of don't-dos versus like, this is what we want to do.
Yeah, but there's some way to do it because
Correct.
most people in the community, unless they've been there a long time and they've been active, they don't know. And they don't know the ordinances, they don't know the violations, they don't know the tree ordinance. They don't know issues as far as putting an addition on the house, what they have to do, who they have to contact. So I think it's something that's very much needed and it's part of the education process for people, especially when they move in. A lot of people just don't know. So
We could soften the campaign.
Yeah, exactly.
Like you're enforcing them, but soft.
Again, I had a neighbor move in and they eventually wanted to put an addition on and a shed and they didn't understand all the steps. And it delayed them making this their dream home, which again, they said they ended up working with the building department and they were able to guide them nicely through it. But when they started the process, they were so overwhelmed, they didn't know how to get there. So again, how can we soften it to say like, we want you to be inclusive, we want you to develop in your neighborhood. Let's be your partner, not be somebody that inhibits you from doing it.
Well, but I think too, if, I know from even in our little sub, you know, we've learned from if they don't know that there are these rules or guidelines or whatever. You know, like we had one neighbor who just put up a enormous fence, chain link fence around his like acre and a half yard, like overnight. And we all sat, and I was on the board of the sub and we all sat there and said, well, like what are we going to do? You know, like that's not allowed. And they didn't ask anybody. And so we said, well, you know, we don't want to chastise him. But so one of the people on the board called him and said, hey, you know, this, there's a way and there's a procedure. And he goes, well, the big dog we got took, took my wife down, broke her leg. And so I threw up a fence. And he said, could I have a dog run? We're like, okay, yeah, we'll approve the dog run. And he took the entire chain link fence down. But wouldn't it be better if somebody had a clue or some guidelines? We don't have to call them rules, but you know, so that they know certain things that, you know, they need to ask their neighbors or they need to ask the township. Because I know so many people have told me, I didn't know I needed a permit for invisible fence. I was just trying to contain my dog, you know? So there's, there's a
There's always a way to do it nicely, like
All right, but if people know the rules, they're more inclined to follow them is what we've experienced.
And again, so because I read this, I don't think this is like, whenever, anybody that I've talked to that builds, again, a builder, that builds in our community talks about actually how great the building department has been, that they've had great working relationship and this is recent. I just talked to a builder about this. So again, I don't want to get a reputation where we're handcuffing people. We're actually trying to have them make their dream home. We want them to invest here and live here for a long time. But I want them to be able to do it with a character in mind. So that, that is my takeaway, is it seems like a lot of no's. Soften it to be a lot of embrace and yes.
Jen, can you go back to the goal statement for this one?
The goal statement is preserve the township's history and natural resources to maintain our unique community character and neighborhood design elements for current and future residents.
That's positive.
I think the goal statement conveys that intent, that we want to keep this as a great and make this a great place to live. If you come here, we want you to help us do that. The objectives, I think, are a little bit more specific in direction to staff, what they are going to need to do to achieve that goal. So I, I don't see no in the, in the goal statement. I see education in the objectives statements. I'm wondering how we can, if there's a way to add a simple phrase to one or two of these to address the concern that's been raised.
So I have a thought again, sorry. Preserve community character. Part of that appeals to me and part of that doesn't appeal to me because we want to be an amazing bedroom community for decades to come. But we can't, I don't think we can do that by being who we are, who we are today. We, we have to evolve thoughtfully. And there was a phrase in Once Somewhere Here. To, you know, we're a premier residential community. But you can't be a premier residential community if you just stay the way you are. I mean, you have to actually change over time because what a premier residential community is in the future, isn't what it is today. It'll be different. I don't know how it'll be different. But if we're not, I just like, look at Birmingham for instance. I mean, it is, has a vibrant downtown community, but it has reinvented itself a trillion times. I mean, you know, if they were, if they wanted to keep Jacobson's there forever, I mean, they would, it would be, it wouldn't work. But they do, but they have that goal of having a great downtown, but it does, how they get, how they achieve that is evolving all the time.
Maybe we could include under what you're pointing
You're saying preserve.
Yeah, totally making sense because what you just described, they had to evolve with, because of COVID, the resorts of the backyards. I mean, if you think about before COVID, cabanas and all these other things were a little less common. Now it's super common. So you're right, like things kind of
Fire pits and all this stuff.
Yeah. So could we add somewhere where we talk about how ordinances evolve, which your team already does that. You evolve where we go where we know we don't, there's encouragement to go with the flow of, of what the vision of the residents have too.
So later, on that same sort of thought, later there was like, I So then later, on that same sort of thought, later there was like an item F says, update the township's master plan to prioritize the preservation.
Yeah.
Of community character. I would just, you know, update the township's master plan to allow the evolution of the township, but in a way that's consistent with our community character and neighborhood designs.
It's recorded too. So you can just read when he just said a good one.
We want to stay a premier community, but we actually don't know today how that's going to look in 50 years. So we have to be willing to evolve, I think, to continue to be a premier bedroom.
Like the outdoor kitchens that are so normal today, 20 years ago would have seemed strange and out of place. But now outdoor kitchens are in most of the plans that we see now that resort in your backyard from COVID.
I think the word preserve is what's getting you. It's finding a different way to say it, right?
Well, because it's the only word in there. I mean, it's sort of the core word, preserve community character. And then all the rules were like, all the things were like.
Evolve or uphold. So basically not saying that we are a stay.
Uphold seems like a rule. But preserve and evolve or preserve.
I can't wordsmith it this late, so I'm just.
But you know where we're going with it.
I think so. Preserve sounds like it's, we're not going to drop ourselves in amber and think we're a premier community forever, just the way we are. But to be premier, we're going to have to embrace some new ideas and change.
Table moves, that's not fair of these people though.
I think we have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, I'm not going to say anymore.
No, that's a good point. All right. Anything else?
Oh, because we're near the end.
All right.
Finished?
Well, we are on the second to the last priority and that's the reliable infrastructure. These are the objectives that would move you towards the goal.
Where did the clean technology come from? Was that one of the ones we talked about?
We talked about that.
Clean technologies were mentioned.
Yes.
It was mentioned and then it said that some of them are attainable, like some are not attainable, like those, some solar fields. We don't even have land for, for the outdoor spaces, but some had requested like looking into EV chargers, looking into some. So where possible meant like, if it's even in our limitations, could we look at it?
Okay. I'm good.
Yeah, like the EV chargers and things like that.
Love EV chargers.
I know, that's what I just said, that's what we meant.
Okay. And then these would, these would be the outcomes that you're looking to achieve by pursuing those objectives.
All right.
All right. And then the final priority is best in class government. These are the objectives to continue the best in class government and levels of service that you have.
Kind of be maintaining an exemplary workforce.
Yeah.
Emotional intelligence. Employee wellness, I like.
Anything you guys see that stands out? Anything missing? Chris has got the face.
No, I'm okay with it. I was, the only thing was where they, you said a couple of words about maintaining an exemplary workforce.
This is maintain versus retaining. We have an exemplary workforce, but we can't retain them forever. So it's more like maintaining.
Maintain, yeah.
Workforce will evolve naturally.
No, that makes sense to me.
Okay. These would be the outcomes that you would be looking to achieve then. Maintaining the regional status as a leader.
Yes.
That's it?
Any other feedback?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience. Did a great job. Thank you.
We appreciate your feedback.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You mean it in the most loving way possible.
Can we go on to the next agenda item, please?
Very quickly, we will be back. We'll be bringing back those changes back on October 28th. And then next steps is that we'll be working on the implementation plan. That's the how to, you know, achieve the strategic plan goals.
Great.
I thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for waiting us out all this long time.
Thank you. Sorry for the long wait.
Okay.
All right. So I appreciate that, everybody. Now we go to our next agenda item, which is the public hearing for the proposed amendments to zoning ordinance 691 to allow indoor recreational restaurant uses with a liquor license presented by Director Volker. And then we also have the applicants here as well.
We certainly do. So first of all, this was introduced to you at last month's meeting. So here we have an ordinance amendment where we're wanting to have you consider the actual adoption of proposed ordinance to allow for a new use and referred to it as a hybrid where we're taking a restaurant with a Class C liquor license and our tavern license that are presently permitted as special land uses in the V2, V3. We use it as an example, cinemas is an example of an entertainment kind of use. Well, here we have now a indoor recreational restaurant use. So it's kind of combining that entertainment with the Class C to now have something more specific and relative to a more contemporary use and an application that we're going to be hearing shortly. So what is being recommended is that we utilize the standards for a Class C liquor license and incorporate those as we would, as a cinema, so that it's integral use within a planned shopping center. It's incidental to the indoor recreational restaurant use, meaning the liquor license, and that the off-street parking is computed as a shared parking for the overall planned shopping center. So, whoop, the agenda includes a.
Yep.
Can I have a motion? No.
Yes.
And it's reflective of the discussion both by the planning commission, the design review board and your comments initially last month. So we're asking for a public comment. This is a public hearing and for you to proceed with consideration of the adoption.
So we do have to open the public hearing. So we'll open up public comment if there's anyone here other than the applicants that would like to speak. Come on up.
Nope.
We will close that public comment and we'll take it back to the board if there's any discussion.
There's been a lot of discussion about this, in-depth presentations in plural and some updates on it. Did a great job, Patty, as always. I make the motion that we approve this. It's a great ordinance, a lot of work, a lot of thought been into it. Really, it's a good, positive, forward-looking ordinance for the township.
Nice evolution of this, on this issue.
And I would support that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Burnett, supported by trustee Kalinski. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. All right, so next we have the public hearing for the consideration of site plan and special land use proposal for T Times at 6565 Telegraph Road. Today we have, not Andrea, but Patty Volker will be here. And again, we have the applicants.
We certainly do. And so we have Mr. Brandon Shaya and his business partners wanting to present to the township board a site plan and a special land use proposal to occupy two vacant tenant spaces in the Maple Telegraph Shopping Center. We also have the shopping center owner here as well. For a new indoor golf recreational restaurant use with a Class C liquor license. Part of their proposal is also to include the hours of operation. They're wanting to go beyond the 9:00 PM whereby they would like to have an operation of 9:00 AM to 12:00 midnight, Monday through Saturday, and 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Sundays. Because this is now a special land use with the action that the board took with your ordinance amendment, we are now looking at this as a site plan and special land use for the use itself as well as the hours of operation. When we review this proposal, we reviewed it under the standards of site plan review as well as special land use. This is a tenant space, two tenant spaces that are being combined for a, the subject tenant of T Times. The proposal was reviewed under the normal standards for parking and access and circulation. There was a shared parking analysis as well as a traffic impact review by our traffic engineer. Their finding was that the proposal does, the parking analysis prepared by Tetra Tech, it's reviewed by our township traffic engineer, was submitted and reviewed. It was found that the existing onsite parking supply is sufficient to support the shopping center in its entirety, including the T Times operation. There are 225 parking spaces on the premises. And with the requirement based on the peak demand above the retail shopping center and the proposed use, 209 parking spaces are required, thereby the parking is found to be sufficient. The hours were referenced and also in context of the, some of the existing tenants that are found within the center, all of which had ranges between 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Sunday. And they also highlighted that there is a restaurant use with a Class C liquor license to the south, Mex Restaurant, that was approved to run till 12:00 midnight daily. So there's consistency and some compatibility in the, the commercial neighborhood for this proposal. So this went before the desire review board on July 17th and then forward on to the planning commission September 4th. They did hold a public hearing. At the conclusion, they made a unanimous recommendation to the township board. There are some conditions, obviously identifying conditions noted by the township departments. Should there be some signage recommendations that would have to be, or designs that would have to go before the design review board? The adoption of the ordinance amendment to allow the indoor recreational restaurant use. You took action on that this evening. So it's being paired with that, at that action. Approval of the hours as presented, that there be a Class C liquor license agreement that is acted upon by the township board and that there'd be an agreement that is forged between the township and the applicant in that manner. So before you is a request for consideration of approval, subject to adoption of the ordinance 691 effective upon publication and the referendum period of 30 days after the date of publication of the ordinance, elapsing. Compliance with the requirements noted by the township departments, approval of a quota license, Class C license, and signing the liquor license agreement, and then seeking design review approval for any signage. So with that, be happy to answer any questions. And we have the team here tonight that has hung in there and is ready to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, thanks for staying.
I was going to say, gentlemen, good things are worth waiting for. And this is a good one.
Right.
This is probably, yeah, I was just going to say.
There's going to be, I have to technically open that.
I know, go ahead.
Public hearing.
Sorry.
So since it is a public hearing, we'll open up the public comment. If there's anyone besides the applicants that wants to speak. Okay, we'll close the public comment.
I was just going to say this is, while it's worth waiting for, very exciting. Yes, Martin, we can use the word evolution again. Evolutionary. And it's changed. It's really going to be one of the most exciting, I think, additions to the township in a long time. And your record precedes you and you've demonstrated that you're going to do an outstanding job here. And I'm for one, I'm very excited to have you in the township upon approval.
Can I make a motion that we approve?
Motion by trustee Murray, support by trustee Burnett, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass? All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
One last thing.
One more thing. Last thing, consider approval of the T Times application for a Class C liquor license presented by Clerk Brook.
This is just the icing on the cake here. Now we've gone through the key elements. This, if we approve the Class C liquor license, which we have six available, we would do that based on the prior zoning amendment, which we just agreed to, the prior site plan and special land use approval, which we agreed to. All requirements noted in the fire marshal's memo, which was in the packet. All requirements noted in the billing officials memo, which was in the packet. And then importantly, two, last two items, subject to the effective day of the ordinance, number 691, in lapse of the referendum period. After this meeting, any ordinance change requires a, is not effective until after publication, which if all go, things go well, it'll be on this Sunday and then the referendum period will be counting too. So I think that's a total of 30 days roughly. And then signing of the Bloomfield Township liquor license agreement. Subject to those things, I recommend we issue the liquor, Class C liquor license.
And a motion we approve.
Support. I would like to discuss on this, as we talk about recreation and all these things we want to do in the community and they keep asking for, it's great that we can partner with somebody who's bringing exactly what the residents are asking for right there and continuing to have people invest in our community. So I thank you for that and thank you for your patience this evening.
Can I make one last notation too, which was that during the last, since the last meeting until today, there were additional hoops to jump through, which you all did really effectively and quickly. Thank you very much. Kelly, Alan, your attorney also did that too, so thank you and we were able to have it here right today.
She's the best.
Well, I just have one other.
Yeah, Neil made the motion.
I have, just have one other comment in reading the packet. I agree, this is a nice addition to the township. But I also liked as a former school person that you're welcoming the school students from the golf club to come in and use the facility. That's, that's a really wonderful thing and I'm sure it's very much appreciated by the kids in the school district. And you know, as a mom and a former person in the schools, that's, that's a really nice resource. Thank you.
So we have a motion by trustee Burnett. Do we have a second?
I support it.
By trustee Kalinski, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass?
So when do you congratulate?
When do you hope to start? When do you hope to start development yesterday?
Very soon.
Okay.
Hopefully November.
I see you smiling, Stanley. You're happy.
So you have a, your projected opening is November?
Um, no.
No, no, no.
It'll be like first quarter of next year.
Not until after the first of the year.
Stuart.
All right, thank you.
Nice to see you, Stuart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I don't know if this, this works. I just wanted to thank everybody for, for everything that you've done. I definitely want to thank Patty for all the work that she's done and helped us so much. I want to thank Stuart also for being very patient with us as we went through this process. I don't know that a lot of landlords would do that. When I did this the first time in Rochester, I looked at the board and I said, you will be proud of what we do. I guarantee you that you will be proud and very happy with what we do. We're committed to that, so, so we're going to show you.
Thank you, looking forward to it. Good luck.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. So now we have the approval of payroll and vouchers for October 14th. Unless there's any changes, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kalinski.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the last one's a motion adjourned.
I move we adjourn.
Support.
Clerk Brook's support by trustee Kalinski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, see you in two weeks.